Good afternoon, everyone. Excuse me. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Thank you. Councilmember Maple?
Here.
Pardon me, I'm going backwards. I was, I, I, but I was there. Councilmember Kaplan. Councilmember Kaplan. Mayor Potem Telemontes.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Vice Mayor Maple.
Here.
Councilmember Gata.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings will be here momentarily. Councilmember Vang.
Here.
Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Councilmember Vang, would you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and I'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Absolutely. Please stand if you are able. To the original people of this land, the Nisanon people, the Southern Maidu Valley Plains Miwop, Putwin and Wentu peoples, and the people of Welton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento indigenous peoples' history, contribution, and lives.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, a very good late afternoon to my colleagues, the city staff, most importantly, the members of the public. Let me apologize to all of you who came for the 5:00 meeting. It is now 5:30. We did go late at 2:00 as we selected an interim appointee to sit in the District 2 City Council seat, Sean Tao, and that took a long time as it should have. We were very thorough, so we're a little late and we apologize, but we look forward to hearing from all of you who've come to testify on anything here tonight. Let us begin with a special presentation. I turn it over to Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. And Wendell, you are the star, so will you come on up? And your team come with you too, because you don't do this alone when you are city staff. It is truly an honor to recognize you, Wendell, on your official retirement. It begins this Friday.
Yes.
And you began your employment with the City of Sacramento in 1986.
Yes.
That is a... You started off, as you know, as a sanitation worker, moved your way up into supervisory roles in solid waste supervisor in 1999, which was a good day, because that was my birthday you got promoted.
All right.
And you further was, got another promotion as our integrated waste general supervisor in 2018. But not only have you dedicated 37 years to the City of Sacramento, but you have also been part of the City of Sacramento's African-American Employee Leadership Council. You haven't... No, it's, it's one thing to dedicate your time as an employee working for the city, but you have also dedicated your time and effort for mentoring the next generation, understanding what it is to teach our employees how to be good employees, and also protect their rights and make sure that their voice is heard. I've appreciated hearing from you and your voice, but it is truly an honor, because I went down and I said hi to him, because if you, if you know, if you know Mr., Mr. Brown, he likes some bass fishing.
Love it.
And so I asked him, "What's next?" He's like, "No, no, I'm retiring." I'm like, "Well, tell me about what bass fishing you're doing." And it's not just bass fishing, he's in tournaments. And one of the cool things I learned that I think's bearing is, we love California, and we even love Sacramento because of the diversity we have here in Sacramento.
Right.
But Wendell said, because of the diversity and the amount of lakes and the different type of lakes and the bass fishing he does here in California, he can take his skills to anywhere in the United States, because California and our diverse lakes teach him what he needs to do, go and be successful in any other competition in the United States.
Exactly, yep.
So I just want to thank you. It is nowadays, we don't see somebody dedicating 37 years of their life.
Right.
You have. And you have made things better in our departments and for the services you've provided and as a supervisor for the leadership of bringing up the next generation.
Thank you.
And so I just want to honor you, but I also, as, as you have your team around you, I want to give them the opportunity, if they want to say any parting words, because this is the time to recognize you and thank you while it might make you a little embarrassed. We should celebrate when somebody gives 37 years of their life to the city. Matt?
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor members of the council. My name is Matt Ironman. I'm the Director of Public Works, and I have had the gratitude of working with Wendell for at least the past 20 years. I've worked closely with him for the, the past 10, 10 months. And, and really, what I have learned about Wendell Brown is that he's a staple. And he's, he's definitely somebody that you can go to and you can, you can talk things through with, and, and he will give you the best advice that you could, you could definitely take with you. And the amazing, you know, the Public Works Department has 750 employees, and I think every one of the, our employees knows Wendell Brown, and they know his telephone number. And he's not changing it. And the good, the good news is, he still lives in the city, and we could stop his trash service today if he doesn't call us. So I just want to congratulate him and thank him for all of the years of service that he has provided to our citizens, 130,000 citizens that they service on a weekly basis, and not one complaint, I'm sure. So thank you, Wendell, for everything.
Mayor and council members, I'm Tyler Stratton with the Recycling and Solid Waste Division as well. I'm going to keep it short and sweet. Wendell is a true leader. He's a real one, and we are going to miss him greatly. I'm not going to do any roast or anything, I'm just going to keep it short and sweet to a real one here, you know? Yeah.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. I can't say enough about Wendell Brown. He's been instrumental in my career. I made it to general supervisor about two years ago, and this man has taught me everything. He's been there anytime of the night. He's, he's a staple of recycling and solid waste. You can call him, you can get his advice, and he's going to give it to you straight. There is no fluff, there is nothing with him. He's going to give it to you straight. He's going to tell you which way to go and how to get there. But I can't say enough about him. He's a true friend, a staple in this, in this division, and he's going to be missed.
Wendell, before I turn it over to you and tell you to go fish...
Okay.
I, I know a couple of my colleagues want to say a couple things.
Yep. I got Councilmember Gata first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wendell, you know, congratulations. I can't believe it's been nine years I've had the opportunity to work with you and, you know, and talk to you about not only just the solid waste issues, but I just want to personally thank you for the leadership you and your members of the AALC have taken. And many of them are here today. Let's give all of them a big round of applause here. Two mayors now worth of leadership that you've, you've engaged in on top of your service as a city employee, but to making sure that equity and diversity and fairness for all employees is a factor in our city. If we think through the work that has happened in that time, I know the conversations we've had, we look at not only the diversity audit that occurred, but hiring a diversity and equity manager to look at all of our systems and practices, the creation, the first time we looked at our challenges in some of our largest departments, police and fire, and, and looking at how we can create new ways. And now we have the door program because of all of the work that's been happening, brought up from that. And most importantly, I think, you know, making sure that we're looking internally so that, you know, staff feel safe to use their, their EEO process here, continually making sure that we're focusing on those issues and helping that recruitment. And the fact that you've been with the city so long shows that, you know, your commitment and love to the city and that future generations of who want to work for the city should feel that way as well. So just want to say that on top of your work there, of the external work that you've done, plus hosting that amazing luncheon you had the other day, you know, congratulations on all that service that you've done. So a big round of applause for Wendell again on his leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Potem?
Yeah, I'll keep it short and sweet. You are a very honest person. You tell it the way it is and you get things done. That's who you are at the city. In my time here at City Hall, I can't even count how many times I used to, I used to hear Maisha Ross say, "Wendell saved the day." I always knew your name. I always knew you're the person to go to, and you helped us solve all kinds of problems. And you'll be missed, and I'm looking forward to you having some spare time, and I'm sure we'll see you around at the alumni City of Sacramento holiday dinner.
Right. Okay. Thank you for that, but it was my team who made sure that everything got done. I was just fortunate enough to point them in the right direction.
That's why you're an amazing leader.
Thank you. Councilman Jennings?
So my brother, when I go into my computer and I look up your name, and I look at the accomplishments that you have done, many people have already said it already. It says, "He's a staple that you can count on. He's an advisor with good advice. He's a leader who stands above all others. He's a fisherman, not only of fish, but of men and of leaders in himself. He is a true friend to all, all the time. He's a mentor, he's a teacher, and, and, and I love the smile that you have. Like, like even when you're not smiling, you're smiling. And it lets me know that the interior inside you, there's something good going on, and you want to share it with everybody that you come in contact with. And so I can't get enough of your can-do attitude. I've never come to you with a problem that you were not able to solve and/or worked towards solving. And so I wish you the very best on your retirement. We still got work for you if you're ready to come back. Just wanted to let you know. Because, you know, you hire back, or you bring back those who do that great work, and you're one of those who I'd hire in a second, whether it's here at the city and/or anywhere else that I'm working with. So stay in touch with us, and congratulations on your retirement and your years of service with the City of Sacramento.
Thank you very much for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, I haven't known you quite as long, but I, and it's always a risk following Councilmember Jennings, who's one of the most well-spoken people I've ever met in my life. But I did want to say something, and that is, what I've noticed about you in the short time that I've known you is, one, that you're very honest, that I know exactly what to expect, but that you lead with your heart. It's very obvious in everything that you do. It's obvious in the way that you interact with people and how they interact with you, that they feel safe in that space. They feel like you're someone who will teach them, will push them. And I think that that's really shown with, with your team and all the work that you've done. But one of the things, one of the first things I remember, first time we met, I believe it was, it was a, a meeting with ALC, and you were going through your priorities. And one of the things that's really stuck with me ever since, and I guess this is maybe a challenge to my colleagues, is I think one thing that we could really do to help commemorate your time here at the city is to make sure that we have Juneteenth as a, as a holiday here at the city. I know that was a top priority for you. You know, it's a top priority, and I, I hope that that's something that we can discuss moving forward as a city. I think that, you know, the counties led on this and others, we should be there too. But I think that'd be one really great way that we can help honor you and your time. So thank you so much for your many, many years of service to the City of Sacramento.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Well, my, my colleague said it. I will just say that your career, your, your, your presence speaks and screams integrity. That's what it does. It's obvious, right? People love and respect you and have, because you're honest, you lead, you stand up for others, and it's what we want in public service, what we want and need more of. And I hope that the younger generation that looks at careers in public service, look what you've done, Wendell, and thank you.
Thank you.
There you go. Take it. It's all yours. The mic, the mic is yours.
Okay, so I have to be me. I appreciate all the accolades, all the sentiments, I truly do, but I have one issue that I have to bring up, and that is, a member on our team has suffered something that took me back to a time in my career that wasn't pleasant, and it hurt me deeply that time, but the person that I am, I keep it moving, I keep it positive. But this person is experiencing a displacement that I really have a problem with. I sent out an email to each and every one of you just to inform you of it. I know this probably isn't the right time or place, but this is just me. This is who I am. And I feel deeply for this person, because I know the indignity that you feel when you go through something like this, where you feel betrayed by the place that you worked for so many years. And it took me back to that time, and I know what that person is feeling, and that's Ayesha Jenkins, who's a member of our team in fire. And, you know, I'm, I'm happy, but I'm hurting also, because I know what she's going through, and I think it's so unjust. I just wanted to bring it up, that, you know, that's where I am with it. I'm leaving here. I appreciate all that you said, all of you, I really do. But the thing on my mind is the treatment that she's going through right now. You don't treat humans that way. You don't treat people who commit 20 years of their life that way. That's not it. But I'm going to end it there. I know I have to keep it short. Thank you. I appreciate each and every one of you. I, I truly do. I appreciate everything you said. I live my life to help other people. That's it. I thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.
We now move to the consent calendar, and I know, I think there was an item that, Councilmember Valenzuela, you want to be heard separately, right? Item 7?
Yes, please.
Okay. That will be heard separately, so let us work through the rest of the consent calendar on items 1 through 6. Are there questions or comments, or a request for a separate vote on items 1 through 6? Brief remarks on 4 from Councilmember Kaplan. Okay. Any others? I don't see any. Do we have public testimony on any consent item other than item 7, which is going to be taken separately?
Yes, I have three speakers. I have Mac Worthy on item 1, I have Charles Fost on item 1, and Meredith Cooper on item 5.
Okay.
When you have a workshop, what do you use for a workshop? Now, I asked for the monthly investments report at least two years ago. How can you have a workshop on your income and don't even have paperwork on this? Somebody lying. You know, you, you go through this and you say, "Well, investment transaction." What was the interest you paid, made, and what did you invest in? That should be, John Publisher know of that. But it's sad to see that you are sitting there and put this on the agenda, and nobody stand up and say, "This is what we invested in." We know you don't know what you're doing, but hell, ask somebody, and they may show you a direction or to keep the public transparency of what's going on with your money. You had a workshop with the police department? They didn't show no money. You find out the police department makes money from towing. Why wouldn't that be, show that they didn't come? What are you hiding? Who are pocketing their money? It's time to quit lying and come down to earth, because we ain't heard nothing going change yet this morning. We ain't heard nothing. Same old thing. Grantson Barnes.
Charles Fost?
Throughout the entire document, there's at least five companies, not including banks, that directly benefit from slavery, human trafficking, and sex trafficking within the, in that document. I think that's worth noting. If we're going to have resolutions, a resolution for the city not to put, invest money in organizations that directly benefit from slavery is probably a resolution worth having.
Next speaker is Meredith Cooper. Meredith Cooper, I'm speaking on item 5. Thank you. Meredith's speaking on item 7, so I don't have anyone else on the consent calendar.
All right. I do have two members that want to speak on several items. Councilmember Kaplan on item 4, and Councilmember Gata on item 5. Please.
Thank you, Mayor. Team, I just want to call out item 4. I am the one appointee to on the Regional Water Authority, but also Brett Ewart of our staff is leading the Regional Water Authority and on this process to make sure that the money we get from the Department of Water Resources is used in the right way for saving our water rights and encouraging more groundwater banking that we need as we move forward to help address a climate change. So I just want to give a little plug for, one, the leadership of our city staff on the Regional Water Authority, and that this is a good start getting money from the state.
Thank you. Councilmember Gata?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to, one, thank all of our city staff and our partners and our board members on the Air Quality Management District. You know, we are, there, there's an unprecedented amount of money that is coming from the federal government, of, of which $5 billion is for the Community Pollution Reduction Grant Program. And this allows us to be eligible to apply for up to $21 million of it for a number of our both, not only climate goals, but housing goals, our public transportation goals here. And so just wanted to thank the staff for their work in this. This is part of our regional strategy when identifying ways to tap into these dollars, and I think the more advocacy we do this as a joint region, the better. But exciting opportunity for us to be able to really affect our, both our air quality and climate goals that we're trying to achieve with that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And with that, I will be glad to move the bounds of the consent calendar.
All right. It's been moved. Is there a second? Second by Vice Mayor Maple. All in favor of items 1 through 6 on the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, that passes. We move now to item 7, which Councilmember Valenzuela has asked be heard separately, and this is the sanctuary city resolution. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Thank you.
Why don't you take it away?
Thank you, Mayor. As this is a council member request, there is no staff presentation, so I will be presenting tonight in partnership with two individuals from the public who are here tonight. But I want to start briefly by saying that this is not a symbolic gesture. This is a binding resolution, which is more critical today than it ever has been. I will never forget, after the 2016 election, our legislative leaders, the California Legislature, issued a joint statement. And that statement essentially said that California was not a part of this country when it was founded, but we are now clearly a part of this country's future. And I have that statement printed in my office here at City Hall, and I'm sad to say that we are sitting here many years later, and again, that tra, that statement has borne very true. And I am proud of our state legislature for how they have stepped up to pass laws to protect many communities, including and particularly tonight, our LGBTQ+ community. But it isn't enough. So I am honored tonight to be bringing forward this resolution to declare the City of Sacramento a sanctuary city for transgender people tonight. And I would like to bring up two people to help present, and first, I would start with Emily Smet, who, this resolution was... This resolution was drafted by a subcommittee of DSA Sacramento, of which Emily was a leader. And I thank you, Emily, for being here tonight, and like to give you the floor for a few moments.
Thank you, Katie, and good evening, council. My name is Emily Smet. I am a transgender woman, and I'm speaking behalf of the Sacramento chapter of the Democratic Socialists of America. First, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Valenzuela for submitting this resolution, and again, for pulling it for discussion. This resolution will essentially protect trans people and gender-affirming doctors from unjust out-of-state investigations. It will ensure that no city resources or staff time will be used to cooperate with out-of-state agencies in prosecuting or investigating individuals simply for receiving medically necessary transgender health care, such as hormones, surgeries, or mental health services. This is so important for the health and safety of our community, given the increasingly hostile political climate for transgender, intersex, and non-binary people, which has already led to the creation of what you could call transgender refugees in the United States. Today, 24 states have enacted laws or policies limiting youth access to gender-affirming care, and four have introduced bills to do so for adults under the age of 16, under the age of 26. Fully 38% of youth aged 13 to 17 now live in states that restrict access to the care they need, and 22 states now even impose professional or legal penalties to doctors providing gender-affirming care for youths. As a trans person, I have watched with increasing concern as year after year, states across the nation introduce increasingly restrictive laws targeting transgender life. Over the past two years, there has been a five-fold increase in the number of states with such prohibitive laws. I believe that the trend is clear, that what started as bathroom bills and sports bans has escalated to full bans on medical treatment for transgender youth and adults, and even the criminalization of doctors that assist them. It is still unknown what further escalations these states will bring against trans people in coming legislative sessions, and we hope that the City of Sacramento is never put in the position where this resolution will have to be enforced. But this resolution prepares us for the rising tide of transphobic hate in our country, a hate that manifests itself in the groups opposing this resolution here today. But most importantly, this resolution shows the transgender community of Sacramento that the city strongly supports our right to bodily autonomy. For these reasons, I am urging the council to vote yes on this resolution.
Thank you, Emily. I'd like to invite forward to close out our presentation Petra Cox, if you're here, Petra. I've known Petra's parents for years, but actually only recently met Petra. And I met Petra because I saw a GoFundMe that was circulating on social media accounts trying to raise money to bring somebody here from, from another state, from an unsafe situation. And so I think I just want to resonate that what Emily just said about this is already impacting people across the country is so true. Sacramento is already acting as a safe haven for many people. So I want to thank you, Petra, for all you've been doing, and give you the floor, please.
Thank you, Councilwoman Valenzuela. So, yeah, I, I just wanted to sort of speak to some personal experiences and what's been happening with me and my, my roommate's lives recently. But essentially, everybody except for me in our household, we have four people who live there, and three of them are here in Sacramento, fleeing from abusive... there, and three of them are here in Sacramento fleeing from abusive home situations. Well, really, all of us had to flee from another abusive housing situation before we moved back here to Sacramento from Rancho Cordova. But it's... I know a lot of trans people who are here who didn't grow up here, and I don't know that many trans people who grew up here and don't still live here, because that's the kind of city that Sacramento already is. It's already an environment that we can feel safe in. It's just that every step counts, and the deck is already so stacked against us as part of the, related to all of my roommates being in town fleeing from abusive situations. One of the things affecting people's minds right now in their lives is the fact that housing in Sacramento is getting really expensive. And you, you know, you're 24, you get help from your parents when you're moving out. What do you do when your parents don't speak to you anymore? Or when you can't escape your house where you live, which is a situation that my boyfriend was in for years before finally fleeing to another abusive home in Connecticut and then fleeing here finally, which it's the first place he's ever lived that he feels safe. And I'm tremendously grateful to Sacramento for that, but like, these things still affect us even after we get into a more stable environment. And this resolution is a good thing for us as a community, because so many of us need help. And it's really, really difficult to get in a lot of the country. Related to the medical stuff, my boyfriend has endometriosis, and he was denied, he was denied clearance for his hysterectomy a year or two ago, where he grew up in Arkansas, essentially on the basis that he was a trans person. Because this is like a medically necessary surgery for people with endometriosis, and he was, he had a doctor who was supporting him the whole way, and the higher-ups in the system just decided that because he was a trans man, he didn't deserve to have this surgery that he needs. And now that he's in California, he'll finally be able to pursue actually getting that surgery. Thank you.
Thank you, Petra. Thank you so much. To Emily and to Petra and to everybody who I know has worked together and is here to support this tonight, thank you. This is one of many reasons I'm proud to live and represent the community in Sacramento. So with that, Mayor, I'd love to open it up for public comment, please.
Of course. Thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela, and thank you to the two speakers who helped us open tonight's hearing. Let's hear from the public. We have 37 speakers.
Mayor, I have 38 speakers, so please feel free to line up in the middle aisle. Shonda Wesley, Julius, Ryan Misano, Alexandria Edith, Case Fritz.
Again, before, Ms. Wesley, before you begin, let me just reiterate, this is the people's chambers. We give everyone the ability and the right to be heard. We expect that everyone in the audience will remain calm and respectful, even if you don't like what you hear from any of the speakers, so that we can, we can make sure that everyone is heard. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. Hello, counsel and Mayor Steinberg, and thank you for the resolution, Councilmember Valenzuela. My name is Shonda Wesley. I'm a resident of East Sacramento in Council District Four. I'm also a mom. I'm here to encourage you to vote yes on the resolution. Detractors will tell you the council should be working on something more important. This council can walk and chew gum at the same time and work on many important things. Some say that this would just reaffirm state law. What's wrong with that? But the majority in opposition will simply spit out hate of our trans community, likely due to deep-seated fear and misunderstanding. Regardless of how this measure made it to you tonight, you have a decision to make tonight. If you vote no, for whatever reason you give us, you officially will side with those who seek to take away protections for our kids and show trans kids throughout the region they are not deserving of your vote or our city's support. You will vote, or you vote yes, and tell kids of all kinds that they are welcomed here. Because those of us in this room is not what this is about. The kids will hear what you have to say about them tonight. They will. They do. So please vote yes, because that vote has repercussions for our kids and how they view themselves and their place in our community. Thank you for your time.
Julius, then Ryan Misano. And again, please feel free to line up in the aisle. We have quite a few speakers. So Julius, Ryan Misano, Alexandra, then Case. Please proceed.
All right, get the...
Yeah, I need you to start, then I can. Thank you.
I'm gonna write a speech, but I have a speech ready, but I just disagree with the notion of if you oppose this resolution, somehow you're transphobic. The definition, I understand, is having fear of transgender people. I don't fear anybody but God. And so do people that say that it's transphobic to oppose something, it's just incorrect. I don't fear anybody. I love all people, and I'm not gonna lie to somebody based on how they identify. You can do what you want, but if you make the claim that Christians try to impose their beliefs on people, well, then how are you any different trying to impose your ideologies on people? So I just don't see the distinction there. I wanted to bring up this interview I did with Chloe Cole, if you guys know who she is. She was somebody that was manipulated into changing her gender, but then detransitioned and got hate because of it. So where's the inclusivity? So I'm gonna play this video. Hold on a second.
How do you think that they're targeting children?
Well, I think a big part of it is definitely profit. By sterilizing a kid, by putting them on puberty blockers, by stopping their development, and putting them on cross-sex hormones and eventually surgeries, you're setting them up for lifetime medicalization. And the figures for, some of the figures for transition, I mean, some of these patients cost about $300,000. It's about $300,000 per patient for a full medical transition. And I think it is part of a larger breakdown of family that is causing this, like there are a lot of these kids.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Ryan.
No.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
No.
Our next speaker is Ryan, and then Alexandra.
It's incredible that in the 34 years since the internet was rolled out, how the minds of the nation have been shifted. Truth sounds like hate to those who hate truth. To begin with, our Declaration of Independence, which those who have never seriously studied history are taught to reject, stated that our rights come from nature and nature is God. There are objective truths, and there is objective morality. An objective truth is something that is true for all time, for all men, and in all circumstances. The simple fact is you were born as a boy or girl, no matter what delusions one may harbor. There is no vote, there is no law, there is no judge that can change these immutable laws. Additionally, there are many Americans who have detransitioned. Their voices are not being heard. I urge the critical thinkers to recognize the appeal to anecdote logical fallacies and to focus on the lessons of history. Time tells all tales. This is a concerted agenda, and reading Judith Reisman's Sexual Sabotage helps to reveal how it was unleashed on America, beginning with the 1948 Kinsey Report. Amazing, that was the same year that Mao was set up as a puppet over China and Israel came into existence, and all three events had the same tribe behind it. When you study the Supreme Court, 1965 was Griswold versus Connecticut, which legalized birth control. 1969 was Stanley versus Georgia, which legalized pornography. 1973 was Roe v. Wade, which legalized abortion. 2003 was Lawrence versus Texas, which legalized homosexuality. 2015 was Obergefell versus Hodges, which legalized homosexual marriage. And none of those are legitimate in God's eyes, and they will be overturned. So how history views all of us is going to depend on who has the courage, which is the definition, is having the ability to stand for what is unpopular at times when adversity makes it extremely difficult to do so. It's gonna take those who have that kind of courage to allow this truth to prevail and so that good will prevail and evil will once more find its place.
Thank you for your comments, Alexandra, then Case. Alexandra, Case, then Sarah Connor.
We're gonna have order, we're gonna have order in the chambers, as I said, so that everybody can be heard, even... Even, even. Go ahead.
Arkansas prevents doctors that give gender-affirming care to minors from receiving insurance. Florida bans gender-affirming care for minors and is attempting to steal trans kids from parents for seeking it. Georgia bans hormonal care for trans children. Idaho makes it a felony to provide gender-affirming care to minors. Indiana bans all gender-affirming care for minors. Iowa prohibits doctors from knowingly performing gender-affirming care on minors. Kentucky banned gender-affirming care for minors by overriding governor's veto. Louisiana approved a ban on gender-affirming care for minors with an override of governor's veto. Mississippi bans any person from knowingly providing, aiding, or abetting in the receipt of gender-affirming care to minors. Missouri prevents state Medicaid from covering gender-affirming care for any age and prohibits providers from prescribing HRT to minors. Montana bans gender-affirming care for minors. Nebraska law bans gender-affirming care for people up to 19 years of age. North Carolina overrode governor's veto and bans gender-affirming care for minors. North Dakota makes performing sex reassignment surgery on a minor a felony and makes providing HRT to minors a misdemeanor. Ohio overrode a veto banning gender-affirming care for minors. Oklahoma makes providing gender-transition procedure to a minor a felony. South Dakota will revoke the license of any healthcare professionals for administering gender-affirming care to minors. Tennessee bans healthcare providers from performing or offering to perform gender-affirming care to minors. Texas bans all gender-affirming care for minors. Utah restricts health providers from performing gender-affirming care for minors. West Virginia prohibits all gender-affirming care for minors. Sacramento City Council, the trans community is under attack nationwide, and there is no end in sight. Every day, trans children across the United States have to fear for their lives. This resolution is your opportunity to rise above the hate and inhumanity of those that would rather see us die than live our lives. This is your opportunity to show the trans community that they are not alone. This is more than just posturing or friendly words to get votes. This is our lives on the line.
Case, and then Case, then Sarah Connor.
My name's Case. My pronouns are V and M. I'm the co-chair of the Sacramento Democratic Socialists of America, and I helped write this resolution with several other people in DSA. I would like to thank Councilmember Katie Valenzuela for working with us and introducing this resolution. We wrote this resolution for several reasons. One, that gender-affirming care is health care and it must be guaranteed as a human right. Gender-affirming health care has been proven to be evidence-based, medically necessary, and life-saving by numerous institutions, including the Association of American Medical Colleges and the American Academy of Pediatrics. We must ensure that the city does not undermine the existing statewide Senate Bill 107. Prior to the overturning of Roe v. Wade, Texas passed laws restricting abortion rights, including sizes of doorways and rooms, among other restrictions. There are initiatives being worked on in the state right now, such as the Eliminate Students' Rights to Participate in Schools and Activities Consistent with Their Gender Identity Initiative that the city must stand in opposition to. We have seen numerous state legislators across the country pass anti-trans bills, just like the ones illustrated seconds ago. I have stood face-to-face against Nazis who showed up in Rockland and Sacramento who claimed to be protecting the kids while literally targeting and harassing children. Joe Biden, when he had a majority, failed to pass the Transgender Bill of Rights. We must also join every other major country in adopting free, at the point of service, healthcare system, including gender-affirming health care for trans people, through a Calcare or Medicare-for-All system, which DSA is actively fighting for in our healthcare committee. This is why we must boldly declare Sacramento as the place for trans people, as we stand in solidarity with all trans people being persecuted by the federal government and states all across the country. We must adopt this resolution, ensuring no city resource goes to opposing trans people seeking gender-affirming health care in Sacramento and become a sanctuary city.
Sarah Connor, then Evan Minton, then Jonathan Cook.
Hi, my name is Sarah Connor. I'm a member of the Democratic Socialists of America. I'm just here to underline and emphasize the things that my fellow members of DSA have already said about the critical importance of this resolution for Sacramento's trans community. I know and love so many trans people, and I see all across the nation a trans panic sweeping our nation. And I find it despicable, and I find it horrifying, and I believe that the trans people in this city deserve better, and this resolution is a step toward that. I find it imperative that law enforcement be held accountable, that the city be held accountable, and that the trans people who are a vital member of our community are protected to the utmost ability that we have as a city. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Evan Minton. Evan Minton, Jonathan Cook, Sabrina Navas, Stephen Barasa.
Hi, Mayor and counsel. I just want to address the crowd. I have a nephew that I was a primary birth coach of, and I helped raise for 12 years. And what I have come to understand from that experience is that having kids is supposed to expand your heart, not contract it. And when you have a kid that you're helping to raise, every child becomes your child. Of course, I support this resolution. But I'm actually here tonight because I was originally scheduled, because tonight I was arranging for local trans youth and their parents to celebrate Sacramento's Second Annual Day of Visibility in our chambers. And we actually had to postpone tonight's celebration to protect young people from the Moms of Liberty. Moms, I want you to know that you also have LGBTQ+ kids. And I also want you to know that LGBTQ+ youth who have felt high levels of social support from their family report attempting suicide at least half the rate of those experiencing low or moderate support. And fewer than 1 in 3 trans and non-binary youth find their home to be supportive. Moms, I urge you to support your kids, no matter who they are. And I also want to address my comments to your trans kids.
Evan?
Okay. Mayor, I would like to also address my comments to the kids who might be in the audience and the kids who are also sitting at home, feeling like there's something wrong with them.
Go ahead.
There is nothing wrong with you. There is nothing wrong with you. You are going to have successful and healthy lives.
Your comments, your time is complete.
Good evening, Mayor, counsel. Thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela, for bringing forward this resolution. I'm Jonathan Cook, and I'm here this evening in my capacity as president of the Stonewall Democrats of Greater Sacramento. Stonewall Democrats of Greater Sacramento, here in support of this resolution. Gender-affirming care is life-saving care. Let’s be clear, one supportive adult can make the difference in the life of a young person, the difference between them being alive, or the difference between them taking their life because of the lack of support. So if you want to talk about protecting children, about protecting youth, this is what we’re talking about. It’s making sure that the city is having the moral clarity and the question of values to stand up for the values that represent the diversity in Sacramento, the beautiful diversity that exists in our LGBTQ+ community here in Sacramento and throughout the county. For most of my career, I worked in community-based mental health and ran a gender clinic. Gender-affirming care is also mental health care. It’s medication, it’s, yes, sometimes surgery when that’s appropriate. And so these states, and let’s frame this in the context of where we are in this moment, are trying to ban healthcare. It’s tied to trying to ban bodily autonomy for women for their reproductive healthcare. It’s the same thing. In the California Assembly, they have introduced a bill to try to have teachers forcibly out trans students in schools in California. The Senate, and the House, and Congress put a poison pill in the resolution to fund the government, banning embassies from flying pride flags. It’s not just trans people, it’s the entire community, and I urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Navas. Sabrina, then Stephen.
Greetings, Mayor, City Councilmembers. Thank you for taking the time to consider this proposal. My name is Sabrina Navas. I am a trans woman, and the president of PFLAG Sacramento. We live in a time where two S-LGBTQIA+ community individuals are being used as a scapegoat for political and financial gain by people who would see our very existence criminalized, and any care we receive banned. Specifically, transgender people are fleeing places that have suppressed our identities, encouraged violence against us, removed any legal protections we may have enjoyed, ostracized us from society, torn us apart from family and friends. Historically, trans and gender nonconforming people have faced the erasure of our existence. It makes me proud to live in a city that would rather welcome us and celebrate our presence. The people who oppose rights for trans people often consume dangerous media, participate in harassment campaigns, work to destroy public education, destroy women’s sports with invasive checks on athletes, and encourage bullying of anyone who doesn’t fit their expectations of how someone should dress, act, or speak. Make no mistake, the people shouting aloud as to “protect women” are the very ones encouraging our harassment and violence against us. As women, we stand together with the message that no one has a right to tell us what we can do with our bodies. No one has a right to know our physical makeup. No one has a right to use us as a scapegoat to further hateful agendas. A recent survey of transgender people, which I participated in, shows positive mental health outcomes for trans people who receive gender-affirming care. The negative outcomes we see are the result of harassment from people who take their own anger out on others. Our community boasts leaders, artists, people of faith, and people who believe in the human spirit, rights activists, and people who serve their communities, for their sake, for my sake. Please vote yes on this measure. You will be saving precious lives. Thank you.
Hello, Council and Mayor. I’m a senior member of the gay community. Back in the 80s, the acronym was GLBT, and I’ve been a long supporter of trans, back then it was transvestite, transsexual rights, and gender fluidity. But flash forward today, and our movement’s been hijacked by what I call a form of trans Marxism, transsocialism, which is way far to the left, way too extreme, and this declaration is just way too vague, because, you know, protecting transgender people, too vague. We’re talking about women’s sports, women’s incarceration, and most importantly, children, minors, who are exposed to medicalization. And, you know, I went to the Detransitioners’ Rally, and you really should hear the voices of the detransitioners who have been led into this quick medicalization, double mastectomies, and castrating drugs. So this is about both sides, you know, that are in favor of this and against this, are here to protect the kids. We all want to protect queer kids and gender, and gender nonconforming kids, and I celebrate them to be who they are and to dress how they want, but let’s protect them from medicalization. And now, if you could show the screen, you know, the Tavistock is a renowned gender clinic in London, and they no longer will prescribe puberty blockers, because they found that there’s no evidence that they are safe or effective, and that was from evidence from the National Institute for Health and Care Excellence. Now, Europe has followed suit, and they’ve raised the age of consent for so-called gender-affirming care to the age of, the light blue represents the age of 20, the dark black, it looks black up there, is the age of 18. They’re smart, because as the world is adjusting to this and trying to find equilibrium with this issue, it is changing.
Your comments, your time is complete. Our next speaker is Eve Banis and Louis Cortez.
Please.
Next speaker is Eve Banis and Louis Cortez, David Schultz, Ethos De Leon, Margot Rinaldo. Calling Margot is Jennifer Laurent.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Eve Banis. I’m a non-binary community member here in Sacramento, and I’m the advocacy and training lead at the Sacramento LGBT Community Center.
And hi, I’m Louis Cortez. I am the chief development external affairs officer for the LGBTQ Center here in Sacramento.
The center works to create a region where all LGBTQ+ people thrive. We support health and wellness, advocate for equity and justice, and work to uplift our culturally rich and diverse LGBTQ+ community.
Thank you. Dear Mayor and Council, several states have passed legislation criminalizing the provisions of gender-affirming care and parents who allow their children to see gender-affirming care. This criminalization is not representative of the recommendations of major medical associations and standards of care of transgender youth. I want to thank you for considering and supporting the resolution to designate Sacramento as a sanctuary city for the transgender community. My pride and calling to come into home is rooted in my journey from Texas, a journey shared with many from the LGBTQ+ community, who have sought refuge from discriminatory treatment and policies. A personal example involves a close friend of mine, a dedicated therapist who happens to be transgender. This person has tirelessly, tirelessly worked to ensure trans youth do not feel alone, focusing on suicide prevention and empowering parents. Yet she was compelled to leave Texas due to the anti-trans legislation. So coming to this pledge to be a safe haven for the transgender community is profoundly encouraging, ensuring that a place where our collective talents and compassions can not only find protection, but also contribute significantly to enrichment of us all. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. David Schultz.
May I ask your support?
David Schultz, then Ethos, then Margot.
Hi, good, oh, hi, good evening. My name is Dr. Schultz, and I thank you very much for having us here today and opening this very important topic. So, one of the really important things about being a physician is being there with the patient in that moment. There’s a lot of things going on in a lot of different places, but in that moment, while I’m sitting in that room, talking to that patient, and when it comes to transgender care, a lot of the time, we’re the first people they tell. It’s important to be compassionate, important to be there, it’s important to give them options, talk through things with them, and have a doctor-patient relationship. So I’m in favor of this. I’m in favor of having that moment, having that compassion, being there for that person. It’s about more than all these additional things, these things that are going on, it’s about being in that room with that person. And that’s the thing that I kind of wanted to talk about today, and how important that those moments are. I’ve had patients who are transgender. I’ve had patients who are questioning. And we have options, solutions, thoughts, sometimes it’s just being there, sometimes just hearing them out, saying, “I hear you, I see you.” Sometimes that’s all you need, and it’s important that we have the time to do that for our patients. So I thank you very much for bringing this important issue forward, and for giving safety and protection to our patients of all ages, our physicians, our healthcare workers, our community, and thank you for being there for us, all of us. Thank you.
Ethos?
Good evening. My name is Ethos De Leon, my pronouns are they/them. I’m currently in 911 EMT in Alameda County, and about three months away from receiving my paramedic license. I am actively working on the streets, and have worked on the streets of Alubia, Sutter County, Contra Costa County, and Alameda County. And every day, I am a physical representation of what a surviving trans adult looks like. I was suicidal my whole life. We didn’t have words such as trans, we didn’t have pronouns as they/them, we didn’t have GSAs, we didn’t have PFLAG when I was growing up in the 90s. And I was born and raised in a conservative Christian household, so I was indoctrinated in cis heteronormativity, but I still turn out the way that I am today. It pains me to have to fight people who absolutely want to see me dead every single day, including people here in this chamber here today. But I fight every single day to show up against this legal genocide that is happening against trans and non-binary youth across this country, and I show up in that ambulance to give that compassionate care that the doctor before me can provide to those that need it, those on 5150 holds for no reason, especially my trans youth. I apologize, this is emotional for me, because I moved here to Sacramento two years ago because I was, I’m a refugee from this anti-trans world that we live in. Things were going bad, I was experiencing transphobia every day, and I came here to Sacramento for protection, because I know California is the only safe place for us to exist in this country. So I appreciate you all for this resolution, but I also hope that the people that want to see me dead, and others like me dead, see me, that I’m not going anywhere, and neither are the trans youth, and neither are the trans adults. We are going to use the bathroom, we are going to use locker rooms, we are going to play sports, we are going to show up every single day in our lives, we are going to be visible, and you can’t take that away. We are here forever, we have been here forever, and we are not going anywhere.
Hi, everyone. Hello, my name is Margot. I am the co-chair of the Sacramento Democratic Socialists of America. I am, I’m so proud of our organization to bring this resolution forward, as well as, I just want to ask if all the organizers in this room here tonight, if you can give yourself a huge round of applause. I do not believe there will be much debate about this resolution tonight, I feel like this is probably likely going to pass, and so I thank you all for that. I think I would just urge that in the future, and when we pass resolutions, you know, in support of civil rights, that we make them more than platitudes, and we actually do the work to ensure that we’re offering material protections to the people in this city. And I think that’s what’s happening here tonight, and I’m very, very, very proud of our community that has shown up and made this happen, so, thank you.
Jennifer Laurent, District 3. I’m here today to offer my unequivocal support to this resolution, and I urge you to do the same. I hope that everyone here understands that we do not get to choose for other people who they are, what they will become, how they inhabit their own minds and bodies. It’s not up to us to make sense of it or figure it out, we just need to respect it. However, it is our obligation, and it is especially your obligation, as leaders, to provide safety and security to all people in Sacramento. I’m not interested in the arguments of foolish people who want us to believe that just because queer people exist, they’re a threat to us all. The most generous way I can characterize that sentiment is the twisted concerns of scared people, but in truth, they are the same evil we have heard spouted for time immemorial. We just switch out the nouns. It’s not always queer people, but sometimes it’s gay people, or immigrants, or some other coming to hurt our families and our way of life, and it’s just disgusting bigotry. If anyone is harming families, that call is disproportionately coming from inside the house. The number one risk factor to trans youth is whether or not they are accepted in their own homes. The National Institute of Health suggests that 82% of transgender individuals have considered killing themselves, and 40% have attempted suicide. This is a heartbreaking statistic, and it should energize you to take action to prevent such tragedies whenever you have the chance, and today, you have the opportunity to do the right thing by making Sacramento a place that welcomes people fleeing an increasingly dangerous climate and persecution. Thank you.
Your comments. Our next speaker is Dr. Katherine McIntosh-Saco. Corinne McIntosh-Saco. Rebecca Didams. Kathleen Houston. Tristan Berzini. Dennis Mangers. Emma Samuel.
Good evening. I’m Dr. Corinne McIntosh-Saco. I use she/her pronouns. I’m a licensed psychologist in independent practice, having served Sacramento residents for the past 20 years, and I’m also a community mental health advocate. Tonight, I’m speaking on behalf of the Sacramento Valley Psychological Association, or SVPA. We affirm our strong support of this resolution, and we commend Councilmember Valenzuela for not only bringing this forward, but also for centering the voices of those harmed by the current oppressive landscape for gender diverse communities. 41% of LGBTQ young people seriously considered attempting suicide in the past year, and the rates for young people who are transgender, non-binary, and/or people of color are even higher than for their peers. 14% of LGBTQ young people attempted suicide in the past year, including nearly 1 in 5 transgender and non-binary young people. Research demonstrates that having access to gender-affirming care can improve mental health, and similarly, denying gender-affirming care worsens mental health symptoms and increases suicide risk. Transgender and non-binary youth that receive gender-affirming care have improvement in symptoms of depression and suicidality, and those who don’t receive gender-affirming care experience an increase in their mental health symptoms. Now, detractors will say that this resolution is an ideological priority, when in fact, it’s a policy that’s based in science. This council is not only responsible for the city’s business, but also the city’s health. And there is so much health in this resolution. It doesn’t just acknowledge that transgender individuals be, transgender individuals be visible, it actively seeks to protect them by providing a safe haven 24/7, 365, so that they’re able to exercise their fundamental right of having access to evidence-based healthcare, a policy that has been adopted by the American Psych...
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rebecca. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela, for bringing this resolution. Thank you to Emily and to Petra for voicing your support, as well as all those who have spoken before me. I want to just add my voice to the many that you have heard today. I am a lawyer, I have studied the law, I have studied this resolution, and I work in the field of education law. I work with youth every day, though the opinions I express here are my own. I can tell you as a fact, as I have seen in my work, that gender-affirming care is suicide prevention. I know that the students who are supported in their schools, in their communities, and in their homes, are the ones who have the brightest future. I know that there are some detractors who say that they want to point out the detransitioners, the people who think that they were wrong. I would much rather have a child who turned out to be wrong than dead. But I want to thank the city council for showing their support to the trans members of our community, and to all of my students, all of my kiddos, all of our kiddos of California. I see you, we support you. The detractors may be loud, but they are few, and you are supported, and you are loved, and your life matters, and the vote of the council tonight demonstrates that. So thank you, council, I appreciate your time and your attention.
Kathleen?
Hi, and thank you for hearing me. I’m a marriage and family therapist. I work with adolescents in an educational setting in a nearby county. And my kids sit in my office, and they question their safety, they question their identity, they talk about their emotions and relationships, and then they go into the community and they don’t have support, but they’re protected by ed code in their school, that’s a safe place for them. And when they go into their rural community, they don’t have supports or safeties, they have bills that are pending that might take their safety away. So they come here, to Sacramento. It’s a 45-minute drive, and they feel safe here. They find... It's a 45-minute drive and they feel safe here. They find community here. So I'm asking that we continue to say that we see them. No matter who you are and where you are, you can come here and be safe. And I believe that voting yes on this resolution will show them that. Thank you.
Next speaker is Tristan, then Dennis, then Emma.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. My name is Dr. Tristan Buzini. In my professional capacity, I stand before you today as a licensed clinical psychologist and gender-affirmative care specialist, proudly serving our Sacramento community. I also serve on the Sacramento Valley Psychological Association Board of Directors as Diversity Chair. Our organization has submitted a letter of strong support for this resolution detailing the detrimental impact of denying care and protections to youth and adults in our transgender community. I'll echo Dr. Saco's sentiments that this resolution and your yes vote serves as an affirmation of our city and our leadership commitment to protect our transgender youth and young adults. Personally, I am a proud transgender man and member of this community. I have had conversations with my partner in recent weeks and months as we watch the anti-trans rhetoric sweep across this country about our safety and our ability to exist and work and live in our home. I fear for my safety and my livelihood and my life on a regular basis. And I also understand that I am somebody who is in a fortunate position to have resources available. When this resolution came about, I turned to my partner and I said, "We might be able to stay in our home. We might be able to stay in our community. We might be able to be safe here." So I urge your yes vote from a deep place in my heart, personally and professionally. The people in this room, this beautiful community proudly exists in Sacramento and we would like to continue to do so.
Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. Denny Mangers here. I came tonight to stand in solidarity with my LGBT community, with my colleagues in the Stonewall Democratic Club. I have mixed emotions tonight. On the one hand, I'm sad as an American citizen that it's necessary to develop a sanctuary city to protect other American citizens of every age. But apparently, it's necessary. So that's the other half of my emotions tonight. I'm proud. I'm proud that my city has stepped up and is willing to accept the responsibility of providing sanctuary to other American citizens. I'm also here tonight because I am proud to say that I have a transgender sister who was always, when I was raised, my little kid brother. And I protected him as I now protect her. She lives in Florida and won't come here where she would find this sanctuary because her kids, her grandkids, her former wife are all in Florida. She feels compelled to stay there under extremely difficult circumstances. But again, I know each and every one of you. I kind of have a sense for where your hearts and your heads will lead you tonight with regard to this resolution. So, thanks.
Our next speaker is Emma. Emma Samuel, then Meredith Cooper, then Abigail Smet, and then Abigail Alvarez.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Emma Samuel and I'm a resident of District 5 here in Sacramento. And I'm here in unequivocal support of this resolution. As a queer person who came here to California and specifically to Sacramento, seeking a better life for myself, I know the importance of this resolution. And I know that safety and healthcare is a right for everyone. That's why all of you should vote in favor of this resolution to make Sacramento a sanctuary city for trans people seeking a better life, excuse me, for themselves and their families. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Our next speaker is Meredith Cooper. Next speaker is Meredith Cooper, then Abigail Smet, then Abigail Alvarez.
Good evening. Please proceed. My two minutes up there. Go ahead. I'm here to say I both support this resolution because I think it is very important. Absolutely, we should be providing gender-affirming care to both adults and youth who need it. I want to also add that if we're going to have a resolution like this, then we should have a resolution that encompasses all issues related to reproductive justice. And that includes everything from abortion rights, which is healthcare, to defending queer families, ending medical and environmental racism, sexual self-determination for people with disabilities. I could go on and on. This is a really important resolution and thank you. I think if we really want to make an impact, I would like to see even more added to it. And at the end of the day, I also want to say, there is no reproductive justice without reproductive justice for everyone. And that includes reproductive justice for Palestinians. Thank you.
Next speaker is Abigail Smet. Abigail Smet, Abigail Alvarez. I don't see movement. Sunrise, Leah Bowen, Ebony Harpen, Martania.
Good evening, council. Last week, I spoke to you on the topic of sanctuary cities. And I'm here talking about that concept again. And Sunrise wrote a letter to you all yesterday and in the process of writing that letter, came upon this concerning article in the San Francisco Chronicle. Just naming the headline, "California Police Agencies Are Still Sharing Data With Other States." The first line in this article, "The Sacramento Police Department confirmed to the Chronicle it continues to share license plate reader data with other states despite guidance from the California Attorney General." And so, we're talking about affirming state law, but we're also talking about making that tangible in this city in policy. This isn't just a performative measure. This is tangible to how this city operates. We urge your support of this resolution, but also very specifically in addition, call for the city of Sacramento, you as the council, to call into question, why is the Sacramento City Police Department sharing license plate reader data with other states when we are in a moment particularly where our federal government, other states are criminalizing people, are enforcing the death penalty based on access to healthcare services? And I will submit this to the record. Thank you.
Next speaker is Leah. Leah Bowen, then Ebony, then Amaranta.
Hi, council. My name is Leah Bowen and I'm speaking to you here today as a member of the Sacramento queer community. I urge you to vote in support of this. Trans rights are human rights and we, trans people, deserve access to healthcare. And I would encourage you, like I said, to vote yes to support this. Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers and Mayor Steinberg and city manager. My name is Ebony Harper. I am the Executive Director of California Transcendence and I'm also board member of the Transgender Law Center, largest-serving advocacy trans organization in the nation. I came out in 1992. That's when I started presenting the way I wanted to in public. My parents rejected me. So back then, in 1992, some of you are old enough. I don't know. Some of you look pretty young. But back in 1992, Hollywood had a whole group of young people from all walks of life, predominantly black and brown, that identified as trans. And they were self-mutilating and they were getting liver issues because they were taking hormones on the street. And it was a large group of people. And that's how we survived back then. We were doing sex work as 13-year-olds, as 14-year-olds. So people act like that children can't make their own decisions. We did. We left home because home was abusive and we formed our own communities. And so, I advocate so there won't be any other Ebony like that. And I believe in, we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal. And that even goes for my queeny self. And I know people also bring up Germany a lot, but Hitler also came against trans folks right before he came before everybody else. So, thank you.
Okay. Hi. I would like to begin by acknowledging and honoring the Maidu Miwak and Nisanon people, particularly their Two Spirit community members during this trans week of visibility, who for time immemorial have tended to this land and to their people with wisdom, bravery, and love. Hello. My name is Amaranta Nyulbaki. I have not heard Martania before. That's a new one. My pronouns are they/them and I identify as non-binary. I currently work as the Finance Manager at Transgender Law Center, a national organization dedicated to fighting for trans liberation, and serve on the board as treasurer for both P Flag Sacramento and the Stonewall Foundation of Greater Sacramento, not to be confused with the Stonewall Democrats. As a representative of these three organizations, I'm here to say that we wholeheartedly and strongly support the resolution sponsored by Councilmember Katie Valenzuela, resolving that Sacramento be declared a sanctuary city for transgender people. We acknowledge that trans people are people just like anyone else and that centering their rights and healthcare needs will only serve to help our entire community, cisgender people included. The fact is that non-trans people need gender-affirming care too, from the seven-year-old who needs to go on blockers due to precocious puberty, to the aging men and women who need testosterone or estrogen supplements. Everyone benefits from the inclusion and centering of trans needs. Alok Vaidmenen, a renowned gender non-conforming, trans feminine poet, comedian, and public speaker, says that the best way to eliminate a group is to demonize them, such that their disappearance is seen as an act of justice, not discrimination. In the wake of ever-increasing anti-trans legislation and hate crimes across the country, it is vital, now more than ever, that trans people see their own humanity reflected back to them by their community and by individuals and institutions in power. This resolution will not solve all the challenges that trans people face in Sacramento, but it's a step in the right direction. Trans people are here. Non-binary people are here. We're beautiful and we will not be disappeared. Thank you.
Next speaker is Rowan, Ray Hens, Anthony Jones, Nicole Young, Dory Jensen, Levi Goldstein. Is Rowan here? Okay, perfect. I'll read off a few names. Rowan, Anthony Jones, Nicole Young, Dory Jensen, Levi Goldstein, Katie Castres. Rowan?
Are the names done?
Nope, you're up.
Hi, Katie. All right. So I'm going to read a quote by Alok Vaidmenen. I'm also really nervous to be here. I'm actually an advocate. I do a lot of advocacy in the city.
Don't be nervous.
It's a lot easier to do it for others than for yourself. So, it's also annoying to have to perform, I feel like. Like, I'm pleading for you all to care about me and my community. And I feel like we shouldn't have to do that. It should just be a given. But that's advocacy, right? So, the quote is, "They tell us to be ourselves, but if you listen closely, there's more to that sentence until you make them uncomfortable." I think my whole life, I have made some people uncomfortable just for existing. And while people have felt uncomfortable with me, I have felt more than discomfort with them. I have felt unsafe. I support the resolution that Katie's team has put forward as I want others to feel protected as I currently feel living here. I'm excited both to see such a resolution and saddened as seeing this resolution shows how my community is being attacked and that our access to healthcare is being challenged. I currently have the privilege of accessing gender-affirming healthcare in ways that I haven't had before and I'm extremely grateful for that. I'm here, this is my 12th week after top surgery. So I thought I'd say that. I'm very happy after receiving top surgery. I'm not confused. I'm actually, I have more clarity since receiving the gender-affirming care that I have received at Kaiser. So thanks to my Kaiser team. Dr. Munching, if anyone needs to get surgery, I highly recommend. She actually wears a trans cap. I have so much more to say, but I'm running out of time because I'm nervous. So I'll just say, I hope that you all vote yes on this resolution and that, to tell you, I remember the safe spaces in my journey towards self-acceptance and love. I didn't stay in unaffirming spaces. So let Sacramento be a city that is remembered as a place that trans people feel acknowledged, seen, protected, and affirmed by passing this resolution. Thank you.
I'm going to move these because I'm really short. Thank you. I am wondering, as I, I'm not from here. I'm from Placer County and I'm walking through the streets and I'm curious why this right here is the most pressing issue that the city has, because I see a lot of things that could be made better.
No, no shutting out. I'm serious. I'm serious. Kenzie, no. Everyone gets heard.
Thank you. I'm also part of an organization that helps parents fight for their rights against a pervasive ideology that is infecting our schools. And we're talking about kids here. We all know adults have medical rights. We're talking about providing sanctuary to children from parents. Now, I just want to let that sink in for a minute. I'm a parent and none of you know my kids and none of you love my kids like I do. This is insane that we are having this conversation. Insane. Children deserve to be parented by their parents and allow their parents to make decisions without the city of Sacramento offering them a safe place to medicalize their perfect bodies. And Katie Oildell weeps. Thank you.
Next speaker is Anthony Jones, then Dory Jensen.
All right. Hello, everybody. Just real quick. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Communist Party in Sacramento, the industrial workers of the world. But most importantly, I'm here representing myself as a human and I'm here in support of my trans comrades. And I just want to shatter the veil of TERF ideology for any of us in the audience who are unaware, trans exclusionary radical feminist ideology, while claiming that challenge patriarchal systems paradoxically reinforces them by upholding rigid gender norms and excluding transgender individuals from feminist discourse. This exclusion is inherently anti-radical because it fails to address the intersecting oppressions faced by marginalized people. Firstly, TERF ideology perpetuates the patriarchal notion that there are fixed and immutable gender roles, relegating individuals to predetermined societal roles based solely on their assigned sex at birth. By excluding transgender individuals, TERF reinforces the binary gender system, which is a cornerstone of patriarchal oppression. Secondly, TERF ideology often intersects with white supremacy as it tends to prioritize the experience and perspectives of white cisgender women over those of transgender people, particularly transgender women of color. This erasure and marginalization of transgender voices further entrenches systems of oppression and reinforces white patriarchal dominance within feminist spaces. Furthermore, TERF ideology fails to recognize the complexity of gender identity and the diverse experiences of individuals who do not fit neatly into binary categories. By denying the validity of transgender identity, TERF contribute to the erasure and delegitimizing of transgender people's lived experience, thereby perpetuating harm and violence against an already marginalized group. In essence, TERF's ideology inherently...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Time is up.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Dory Jensen, then Levi Goldstein. Is Dory not here? Levi? Then Katie? Then Meg Madden? Beth Born?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Levi Goldstein. I am a transgender and non-binary resident of California. I use they/them pronouns. I am a trans adult who received gender-affirming care when I was a minor. I started testosterone when I was 17 years old, and I received top surgery when I was 18. I would like to discuss a myth today that gender-affirming care is easy to access. I worked with my family for months to make a decision that would work for all of us. My parents made sure that I was sure that medical intervention is what I wanted, and not only whether or not to get it, but what were the right options for me. I also worked with a therapist for several months before I was able to receive it. And a therapist, a person with a degree who practices transgender healthcare, made sure that that was the right decision for me, that my feelings were not because of a lack of self-esteem or any other issue that was intervening. Now, there are other barriers that exist to accessing gender-affirming care, whether that be discrimination or insurance not covering the cost, it being too expensive. And we should be removing those barriers and not adding more. As we all know, hate has no borders. It is here in California, and it will come from other states to here in California. And so this proposal says that Sacramento will not stand for or participate in any legislation that bans access to healthcare. It says we affirm the right of doctors to practice medicine. Let's flip the script. Anti-trans legislation denies families the right to decide what is best for them. Thank you.
Hi, Council, I'm Katie. And I don't actually live here, but I figured if Beth Born can hop over from Davis, so can I. So believing in good faith that what everyone has said thus far is true, I think everyone in this room, we just want the same thing, we want to protect kids. We're just disagreeing about how to do that. And while speaking of protection, I carry pepper spray. Obviously, I don't have it right now, they took it at the door. But the reason I got it is because of Sacramento. The first time that me and my trans partner came to the city, we were on a date and we were gonna be so excited and have a great time. But then we got called slurs and threatened with sexual assault. We were still teenagers, still practically kids. My hands didn't stop shaking for ages. Where were these people when that happened? What happened to protect the kids? So many have called Sacramento a safe place for trans and queer people, but it's not, not really. And that's really scary considering how many people is this last resort? Like, they're sanctuary, this is. It's not enough to rest on our laurels and secure in the knowledge that we're better than everyone else. Don't ever let anyone tell you that this resolution is not necessary. I urge you, please vote yes on this resolution. It's a concrete step towards being the safe place that so many believe it to be, that we need it to be. Thank you.
Hello. The City Council has a proposal before it to designate Sacramento as a sanctuary city for transgender people. The argument is this is needed because other states are moving to restrict so-called gender-affirming care. And it's true. Many other US states and countries, including England, France, Norway, Finland, and Sweden, have, after systemic reviews of evidence, found that the risk-benefit ratio of what is euphemistically referred to as youth gender transition is either unknown or unfavorable. Yes, in plain language, healthcare professionals in these countries and states have found that stunting a child's normal development with puberty blockers and poisoning their bodies with large doses of hormones meant to make them appear to look like the opposite sex has no evidence of benefit and only evidence of harm. This proposal means that a child, if a child is brought to Sacramento by anyone and wants this kind of treatment, the city of Sacramento will not permit law enforcement to search for that child or return them to their family or legal guardian. This is a betting kidnapping in order to cause permanent physical harm. Facilitating the injection of puberty blockers into a young boy because someone in his life thinks he is not masculine enough is homophobic, not kind. Facilitating cutting the healthy breasts off a 12- I know, you get nervous laughter when you start saying the truth. Facilitating cutting the healthy breasts off a 12-year-old girl who has been made to believe her personality and interests means she is magically male is barbaric misogyny, not kind. Gender ideology is a lie, and that lie has spawned the worst medical scandal in history. That is why so many other states and other countries are halting or greatly limiting these practices on children. No child is born in the wrong body.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete. Our next speaker is Beth Born, then Trevor. Mayor, point of order.
Yes.
Just to be consistent with our City Council policies and procedures, I may not agree with the speakers, but we need to maintain a level of decorum in the council chambers. So if you could just kind of remind people-
I reiterate it by banging the gavel, and I've reiterated it verbally. What ends up happening here, as we've seen over many weeks, is if people shop down speakers or unruly, we then ultimately have to empty the chambers, which means that people who have come here with heartfelt positions don't get a chance to speak. And so we will vote, and that's where our opinion will be stated very, very clearly in a few minutes. But when it comes to the public testimony, we must insist that everybody be able to speak without interruption. That's what civil discourse is, even if some of it is hard to hear. So, I agree. The point of order is well-taken, and I hope that we can get through this testimony so that we can move to an actual debate on the resolution. We've got a few more speakers. How many more?
I have six more speakers. So Beth is our next speaker. I have Beth, Trevor, Flo Kofir, WR Ware, Carrie West, and Abigail. Oh, Abigail already spoke.
Go ahead, please.
My name is Beth, and I'm here as a concerned mother. I am not transphobic or bigoted for believing in reality. Never before have we had huge number of kids suddenly identifying as transgender, usually in the same group of friends, maybe in their theater group, maybe in their robotics club, maybe in their choir. These are quirky kids. These are the kids that may be on the autism spectrum. These are kids that may be gay. These may be kids that have had trauma. But I'm here because I want you to know that humans cannot change sex. Sex is binary and immutable. It is every single cell of your body. Taking testosterone to grow a beard or having your breasts removed does not make you a man. Testosterone takes five to 10 years off of your life. It leads to liver cancer, and it causes vaginal atrophy. Girls 13 to 17 years old are having their breasts removed right in my hometown. My daughter thought she was transgender when she was in junior high after learning about it, and after five years, she's become accepting of her healthy, young, female woman body. But her Kaiser doctor, and I'm speaking to the doctor here in this room, recommended she go to the Kaiser Proud Clinic on the first time hearing the pronouns to have puberty blockers and testosterone injected into her body. And I said to her, "No, you will not be a guinea pig, this is an experiment." And children are having their bodies permanently harmed. It's $100 co-pay to have top surgery. It's $200 for faloplasty, which is a fake penis which does not work. And I know because I did an undercover with my doctor to find out what is happening. So please, follow the money. We know who's making money off of these children. It's these doctors, it's these gender clinics, and it's Big Pharma. And for you to be giving away your money to these criminals who are harming our children, you are all guilty of this too.
Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Trevor, then Flo, then WR Ware.
Hi, my name is Dordi Jensen. I had to run away because my parking was expiring. So, I don't know, I'm 64 years old, I was running pretty fast, I think, for me. But I'm back, I'd like to make my public comment. So, first of all, I haven't been to the Sacramento City Chambers before. I usually go to the Davis City Council, or the Woodland, or Davis School Board, or Woodland School Board. I didn't like some of the behavior I saw tonight, especially regarding one of the commenters. Many people turned their faces away. I thought the rule was to listen to others. You can turn your faces away if you want. But I don't think it's proper, it's not professional. You're elected to represent people and act in a professional manner. That would be good if you would do that. Second of all, you have a lot of police here, I guess you need it. I guess you have a dangerous city. Maybe you should clean up your city-
What's your point of view on the resolution? This is about a resolution, we'd like to hear your point of view.
The point of view on the resolution is I'm not against transgender people or transgender surgery or hormones. I just don't want any of it before anybody's of the age of 18, which would there be their age of consent. Any discussion about it before then in the schools or anything like that, I don't want. If they have concerns, they can talk to their parents or the school counselor, somebody can figure it out to help them with it. But no discussion, no changes of pronouns, no changes of names. It's only serving to confuse everybody in the school, taking away time from the stuff they should be learning, especially after COVID, when many have fallen behind, and this is destructive. And when you're talking about trans rights, of course I want it, but not for anybody under the age of 18 when they don't have the ability to consent. That's what I'm trying to say, and it would be nice if this place could be a little more professional. Mostly you did it, but on one speaker you certainly did not. And if you could clean up your city so we didn't have to have so many police. Very nice police, but it makes me think this is not a safe city. So that's my message, thank you so much. Dordi Jensen from Davis, California.
Thank you.
Goodbye. Appreciate it.
Your comments. Our next speaker is Trevor. Trevor. Trevor, then Flo Kofir, then WR Ware.
Hello, everybody. Hi. First time, whatever. My name is Trevor. I'm a resident here of District Four, a member of DSA. And my work is also primarily in victim services, which I've been doing for well over five years. The main sentiment I want to express is that every day I read and see and speak to victims of violent crime. And I want to see Sacramento to be a safe place for our trans community because I've read every day the violence that children are subject to their parents, whether that be- And those parents include the cis white parents who are here today speaking about how they can love their children. I've seen a lot of violence. Anyway, I want Sacramento to be a safe place. And I also want to express the community's concerns that people here are being heard. You guys have made that very well clear, that people are being heard. People here are rightfully upset about people's safety here in this community, as you've heard from plenty of people who've experienced violence here in Sacramento or throughout, you know, the country and throughout the state. So yeah, I'm here just to voice support for this resolution and support that people have a right here to be upset. We should protect our trans community and not listen to bigots and reviews bigotry. And I think that's not much to say. Thank you.
Ms. Kofir?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Flo Kofir, and this evening I'm here in the capacity as a public health professional and a member of the American Public Health Association. And I just want to say, you know, in many instances, I have been in spaces where my identities were not welcome or desired. And I am really grateful to the people who showed up for me and made sure that I was allowed in those spaces and supported me in those endeavors. And so in the same way, I want to stand in solidarity with our trans and non-binary community this evening, and thank you all so much for considering this resolution because it is critical to public health. On November 1st of 2016, the American Public Health Association ratified a policy position that says promoting transgender and gender minority health through inclusive policies and practices. And among the things that are listed here is that these policies that exclude transgender and gender nonconforming people have a negative impact on gender minority health by permitting discrimination and reinforcing stigma. APHA advocates for the adoption and application of inclusive policies and practices that recognize and address the needs of people and communities identifying as transgender or gender nonconforming. And these practices are those that recognize transgender and gender nonconforming identities as valid and deserving of equal consideration and treatment. And so because of that, APHA urges Congress, state legislatures, and local municipalities and other public and private entities to ensure that policies and practices across all sectors are explicitly inclusive of transgender and gender nonconforming people. So I'm grateful for you tonight for being in support of something that is in alignment with APHA. And if I may, ask for a friendly amendment to include the American Public Health Association as one of the organizations that is in support of the data and research showing the importance of these policies because just like our trans community, our public health community often gets forgotten. Thank you.
Robin Ware here. Robin?
Here he is, right there.
Following Mr. Ware is Carrie West, then Abigail Smet.
Thank you, I had to go to the restroom. I'm very sorry. I want to, the reason I'm down here, I certainly want to commend the previous speakers, and I support them. And the reason I'm down here is because it looks like, and I don't know, the homeless population seems to be going down. And because it is horrible situation, but I give a lot of credit to the mayor and to Mr., the city manager, and the-
Excuse me?
Employees. But certainly, it goes to the top of the ladder, Mr. Mayor Steinberg, and the city manager, and the employees. The reason I thought I would come down here, the main reason, is I wanted to commend the City Council, particularly the mayor, for putting together the Community Engagement Team. I looked at the black press, the Sacramento Observer, and I was stunned because the Community Engagement Team is so entrepreneurial, so creative.
I understand.
It blew me away. Eight employees, this is what we need. So again, I want to commend the people who are running this city.
Thank you, Rob.
And Daryl's at the top. The only other thing I wanted to mention is, for the mayor's, I would hope and pray that the community of Sacramento would be able to move beyond the colored line. Dr. Dubois talked about that. He was the first black graduate at Harvard University. And may I say thank you to all of you?
Thank you. Yes. We, thank you, Robin, thank you so much. We are debating the resolution on sanctuary for transgender. We appreciate you. Robin's an old friend, contributed a lot to the community over many years. I thank you for coming here tonight, friend. Okay?
I have three more speakers on this item. Carrie West, Abigail Smet, and Mac.
Hi, my name is Carrie West. I'm the PAC Chair of the Sacramento Stonewall Democrats. There are some people who are weirdly obsessed with what children are doing with their genitals here tonight, and that's disturbing on a personal level. However, I do want to say thank you to the City Council for this resolution. Thank you to the work that you do for our community. I appreciate you, we see you show up. I, as a member, a longtime member of the Stonewall Democrats, I didn't have a supportive City Council when I was growing up, living in Bakersfield, California. So I really appreciate the work that you guys do every day for our community. I do want to clear one thing up though, because I feel that it somehow just kind of gets left out of the discussion. When children are transitioning to get that gender-affirming care, there may be a nonprofit center that they can go to, but frequently they use health insurance, which is provided by their parents' workplace. That means that their parents are actually involved in that decision, and the parents are signing off on all of this care that the children are receiving in the doctor's office with doctor's advice. office, with doctor's advice. So I hear a lot of people here tonight talking about medicalizing of children. That's doctor's advice? So how about let those parents raise their children? And thank you to the city of Sacramento for believing that parents can raise their children responsibly.
Abigail, then Mack.
Hello, my name is Abigail Smet, and I just want to thank the council for putting forth this measure over this resolution, and say that I echo a lot of what the last speaker just said. Parents are involved in these decisions, and this resolution is here to protect all of our trans siblings. I know a lot of these points have been made, so I'll be brief, but thank you for considering this. Please, please vote yes, and hope to see this pass tonight.
Good evening, my name is Mack. My pronouns are they/them, and I'm a community organizer in Sacramento. I'm also a spiritual, gender non-conforming queer, and I'm also a parent who knows that their kid knows what he needs, and that learning isn't linear. I list all of these things, not just because, well, duh, but because I think they're all relevant, as tonight we see TERFs on the same side as antisemites and white supremacists. You see, you see this overt rise in fascism and white supremacy, white supremacy isn't on accident. History tells us that fascism, fascism always attacks anything that isn't in line with their hetero-normativity, paternalism, white supremacy, and extreme religion. A resolution is needed, a resolution like this is needed, because the attacks on queer and trans people, women, and people of color are now becoming more and more legal in law on this stolen land. You see, your institutions are upholding laws of discrimination and extreme evangelicalism across this country. Mayors and city councils across this country. State and federal institutions across this country. Hell, Biden just signed a spending bill that bans US embassies from flying pride flags over, or pride flags, and more. My point being that Democrat, Republican, politician, none of you can really protect us from the institutions that you uphold, which is why we will continue to build dual power outside of them. Underground networks to receive care, receive abortions, have access to health care, feed ourselves, teach our children. Your institutions failing us are literally the catalyst for why we will build new ones, and I give thanks for it. And in the meantime, I give thanks for finally being able to walk into the house of white supremacy, to say yeah to your resolution, that may save lives from the policies and institutions that your government is using to kill them. I guess instead of my usual do better, tonight I will say thank you for doing the best you can. And blessings to every individual in here tonight, whose existence and ability to find themselves is an act of rebellion against anything that doesn't make space, or make space for...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Mayor, I have no more speakers on this item.
All right. All right. Thank you, thank you to the members of the public for coming out to express yourselves tonight. We're now going to turn it over to the city council for debate and resolution. I'll start with Vice Mayor Maple.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to start first with a thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you.
I want to start first with a thank you for Councilmember Valenzuela, for your leadership, for bringing this forward, and for bringing the community with you. I think that says a lot about who you are as a leader, and just really want to appreciate you, and also want to appreciate every single person in this room who came to speak, even though it's not easy. These are things that are deeply impactful to your personal life, your safety at times, which was mentioned by many speakers, so thank you for showing up in this space, to share your thoughts, and just know that we stand with you, I stand with you. I wore, I wore this, this pin today throughout the hallway, and as I go home, to be a reminder that, that as an ally, we must stand here and, and listen, and, and hold you up, and make sure that we, as a city, are doing everything that we can to make sure that you feel safe here. You know, I grew up with a member of my family, who I won't name for their own protection, who, who identified as a man at a young age, and was not accepted by their parents. So much so that when they left, they moved to another state, where they still live, because they didn't feel safe being at home, and, and they were not safe with their family either. And so this is really personal to a lot of people in this room, it's personal to a lot of people in this city, and I think it's important that we stand up and uphold that in every way we can. So I stand in strong support of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vang?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have some comments, and I actually have just one question. So first, I too also want to take this moment to thank Councilwoman Katie Valenzuela, really for her leadership, and all the organizers that worked with her to bring forth this resolution. Also want to say thank you to all the speakers who came here today to really speak your truth and provide insights, and I think this resolution will pass. If I'm kind of counting my votes, I think we'll get there. But really, I just want to say thank you to all of you who came today. Everyone should be treated with respect and dignity, and that includes our transgender and our non-binary youth, right? Ensuring that they're able to be their authentic self is so important. If we're a city that always touts about diversity and inclusion, making sure that we're a sanctuary city is absolutely of utmost importance. I think this resolution is really important, because what it says is that Sacramento is reaffirming our commitment to transgender rights and equal protections for all people. And when we pass this resolution, for me, this is really our commitment to ensure that we're not using city resources to detain or criminalize those who are actually seeking gender-affirming care. I did have a question, because we did have a speaker that come, that came up and shared an article, and I was actually Googling it to read the article, to see, and that, it was published yesterday. And so Mayor, I, I do have one question, you know, when we pass this resolution, right, it is our commitment to ensuring we don't use city resources to detain or criminalize those who are seeking gender-affirming care. I know that abortion and gender-affirming care right now is a crime and a civil violation in many states. And there are people that are leaving those states because they're seeking help here in California. And in the article, it had mentioned that SACPD is currently sharing license plate, and so I just want to ask the question, and maybe it's something that we need to look into, is how are we ensuring that, you know, those that are leaving their states for gender-affirming care here in Sacramento, that we're not sharing that data to be used to criminalize or detain? And so I just want to follow up on that, because I think that's important, if we're going to commit to this. I also want, want to make sure that we do our follow-up. There's, and I was reading this article, there are various police departments that said that they were, and then they reported back that they're going to listen to Bonta, and actually follow what the state law is, and I just want to make sure that the city of Sacramento is in compliance with the AG as well. And so just wanted to, to mention that, if we can look into that as well. And those are my comments, and I stand in solidarity and ready to vote on this item. Thank you so much.
You so much. Council, Councilmember Lisa Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. How, how interesting things change in just one short year, where last year the city council truly celebrated Transgender Day of Remembrance. And it was a celebration in our, our city chambers, and was something that was uplifting, and, and not something that we had to specifically call out, because it's right. And doing the right thing is what our job here is in Sacramento. Yeah, we, we do have to address our budget cuts and our homelessness. But as a school board member for 20 years, what I also saw was that our students who don't feel like they fit in, who identify potentially as other, who, they look, they watch their leaders, they see where they can fit in. And it was important, as a school board member, that I identified and was a leader within our LGBTQ community, to make sure that our students felt safe at school, that there were gay, straight alliances there to support them, that they had teachers they knew that were safe spaces. We should not work in silo. One government entity should not be the protector, and another one silent. It is common sense, that Sacramento also says, we are a safe place, and we are going to take actions that are going to show that this is a safe space, not just by our words, but how we walk it. And walking it is more important than anything else, because right now, our kids are watching. They see it, they're on social media, they know where they are not welcomed, and it is unfathomable that when somebody has, makes the decision to have a child, that you don't love the child for who they are and who they become. We need more kindness, we need more love, we need more acceptance, we need more understanding that when we disagree, there isn't hate, and that it doesn't make people bad. Because we are all one, we are an extremely diverse city, and we are only better when we are together and embracing those who may look different, may look the same, act the same, act different. Differences are not bad. When we embrace our differences, we become the city we need, should be. And so for me, as I brought up Transgender Day of Remembrance last year, this is not a hard stretch for me, because I've been doing this for 20 years, to say, we as a city need to continue to walk our talk.
Thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela, I'd like you to close, if that's okay, if I'll make a comment, then I'll, I'll allow you to close. Thank you, first of all, for bringing this forward. It's, it's, you know, first of all, we spend all of our time on the critical issues, whether it's public safety, homelessness, building a modern economy, that's where we spend our time here, city council. And sometimes, as has been evidenced by the last couple of weeks, it's really important that people know, as long as we can maintain decorum, that people know they can come to the city council chambers and be heard. And I love Petra's hat. It said, "Be a nice human." There is nothing more important or powerful than people, especially young people, knowing that they are loved and accepted for who they are. We debate many things, there are many shades of gray, many middle grounds when it comes to difficult policy, when it comes to people being loved and accepted, when it comes to people's civil rights, we give no quarter in this city. We support you, we love you, we welcome you, we welcome those from other places that are scared and aren't welcome. That's our values. That's what Sacramento has always stood for, even through hard, hard times. And so this resolution is appropriate, I think it is powerful, and is necessary, because no one in this city should feel like they are unseen, unheard, and they certainly should not feel afraid of who they are living here. So thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela, please close us out, and then we'll take a vote.
Thank you. And yes, I want to echo thank you to everybody who, who spoke, it was truly powerful. And I do want to say that, I want to thank the mayor. You know, we submitted this late, because I was a little busy, and last month, and we were rushing to get it done in time for Transgender Day of Visibility on Sunday. And I submitted it thinking, okay, I might have to do a special law and led meeting, we might have to do this, and the DSA community can testify, and then without even asking, you were like, nope, straight to council, on the 26th. And, and I just want to appreciate that, because I think the fact that this is being heard tonight, when we do still have a lot of business on the agenda, really speaks to, everyone today's been asking me, do you think it's going to pass? Do you think it's going to pass? I'm like, of course it's going to pass, it's Sacramento. You know, and that's one of the reasons that I'm really proud to represent this community. But I also have to highlight, and so many of the comments tonight focused on, on young people, and so appropriately so, because so many of the laws and trials and tribulations are really targeting those who are, really need our protection the most. But I also have to say that there are increasing laws that are starting to target adults. This is not just, this is something that we are just seeing the beginning of, unfortunately. And so when people ask me, well, why did you do this, Rezo, why would you do this? I'm like, well, because right now, state law really is only about the young people. And that's good, I'm not saying that's bad, but this resolution will protect everybody. And that's what's so important, is that we're getting ahead of where our state is, we're getting ahead of where we, and hopefully, we never need it. Hopefully, we never need to say, hey, we can't do this, we, we need to stop, we need to hold accountability to our department. But I want to thank, by, Councilmember Vang, for bringing up, implementation is going to be just as critical. And so really, again, want to thank everybody, and with that, I'd love to move this, this resolution for approval.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye, oppose, abstain, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, all. The only, the only condition is that you have to stay for the rest of the meeting. That's my favorite joke. It's a good joke. Just kidding. Okay. All right. Let's move to item eight.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. I'm Suzanne Tam with the Finance Department. The item before you this evening is the public hearing for the proposed renewal of the Sacramento Tourism Marketing District, or STMD.
Do you want to pause for a second while people clear out, so we can hear you? Just a moment, we wait for folks to file out. I want to make sure we hear you. Okay, please continue.
The item before you this evening is the public hearing for the proposed renewal of the Sacramento Tourism Marketing District, or STMD, for a 10-year term. The STMD was originally formed in 2012 to promote Sacramento as a destination for tourism, conventions, and events, and to increase room night sales for Sacramento area, area lodging businesses. The district provides zone-specific marketing to meet the unique marketing demands of lodging businesses in various locations throughout the city and county. Petitions to renew the STMD were submitted from lodging businesses, representing more than 77% in the proposed STMD assessment. On February 6th, council approved the resolution of intention to renew the district. On March 12th, the required public hearing, public meeting was held to allow for public testimony on the proposed increased assessment. At this time, staff recommends opening the public hearing. Upon the close of the hearing, any written protests received will be tabulated, and staff will report back to council on April 2nd with the results. Staff is available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam State Clerk, do we have any public comments on this item?
Yes, I have nine speakers. May I take those now?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Vivian Terry, Mike Testa, David Huber, Riker Flint. Is Vivian here? I'm not seeing movement. Mike Testa. Following Mike is David Huber, Riker Flint, Doug Warner.
Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, Mr. City Manager. My name is Mike Testa, and I'm the President and CEO of Visit Sacramento. Visit Sacramento supports the renewal of the STMD. More importantly, lodging properties across the district that fund the district overwhelmingly support it, too. While we've renewed this district multiple times over in the past 20 years, we've achieved our highest percentage of support from our lodging partners for this renewal. Certainly, we are supported by the hotels and short-term rentals here tonight, but we also have support from hotels like the Doubletree in the Arden area, the Element Hotel at the Sacramento Airport, and the Fairfield Inn Suites in the Thomas, the Embassy Suites in Old Sacramento, the Holiday Inn Express and Suites at Cal Expo, the Hyatt House in Midtown, the Hyatt Regency, the Hyatt Centric, and the Kimpton Sawyer, and the Citizen in downtown, and the Lionsgate Hotel at McClellan, among others. We look forward to using this funding to lead continued growth in Sacramento's hospitality industry, and we urge you to support the renewal of the STMD. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. David?
Good evening, Assistant Mayor, City Manager, Council. Thank you for seeing me. My name is David Huber. I am the General Manager at the Wyndham in Sacramento, located in Zone 4, unincorporated Sacramento County. As the current Chair of the STMD Committee, I'm here today in support of the renewal for the Marketing Tourism District, also known as STMD. Sacramento's tourism industry is critical to our regional economy, and is the key driver in the regional, regional hospitality workforce, which allows support, us to support thousands of jobs, as well as generating hundreds of millions of dollars in economic impact for our residents, our businesses, and our local governments. Although we are not at pre-pandemic staffing levels, my hotel currently has over 50 full-time employees, as well as many, many part-time and on-call associates. The revenues produced by the STMD collection throughout the four zones fund our tourism successes. This funding... This funding received helps drive Visit Sacramento's sales and marketing campaigns as it relates to tourism, marketing, sports, and event destinations. Some of the notable successes we have felt include Aftershock, Golden Sky, Ironman, Junior Olympics, many NCAA events, as well as conferences such as Almond Board of California, Future Farmers of America. Honestly, I could tout their successes all day long, what they do over there, so thank you. By renewing the STMD, we can help ensure that Visit Sacramento and our hospitality community can continue telling our story, both here and abroad, and drive positive economic impact through the region.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Riker Flint, Doug Warren, Jerome Genovese, and then Mike Saddle.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Doug Warren. I'm the Vice President for a company called Welcome Group that manages and runs three hotels in the Sacramento area. I'm speaking today in support of the renewal of STMD. Sacramento's tourism industry is critical to our regional economy, a key driver for our city's hospitality workforce. Our three hotels alone employ 138 people. Renewing the STMD will ensure that Visit Sacramento and our hospitality community can continue telling the story of our destination across the country, drive economic impact for our residents and our small businesses. STMD has been, has used seed money to bring events to our community, attracting new and established travelers. Visit Sacramento has done great things with STMD. The next 10 years of this renewal will bring sports fields and enhanced waterfront district and many other ideas not even envisioned yet. As stewards of the city, you have seen the benefit of the district firsthand. I ask for your imagination on what the future can bring and your vote to, vote to support renewing the STMD district. Thank you for your time.
Following Jerome is Mike Sadi, Tim Wosley, and then Mac Worthy.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. My name is Jerome Harrison. I serve as the General Manager for the Sheridan Grant here in downtown. I'm speaking in support of the renewal of the STMD. The tourism is critical to our regional economy and a key driver of our hospitality workforce. My hotel alone employs over 250 full-time associates, but also let's think about the dry cleaner, let's think about the construction worker, and then think about all the other vendors that we do business with that benefit of a healthy tourism industry. The renewal will ensure that our Visit Sacramento and our hospitality community can continue to tell the story of our destination globally and across the world, and drive economic impact for our residents and our small businesses. I also want to take a moment to thank you, and in particular, the mayor, for the visionary leadership that you have displayed during your tenure as Mayor of Sacramento. I came here as an immigrant, and I actually became a citizen two years ago, so I could vote. So, you know, leadership is difficult, and, you know, we're always asked to come up with great ideas, but a great leader like you have created an environment for ideas to flourish. And really, as a, as a citizen and as a person that does business, I thank you for your integrity, I thank you for your support of our community, and I wish you great luck. I don't think I'll be back in City Council, so that's why I take this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Mike Sadi, Tim Wosley, then Mac Worthy.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Michael Sadi. I operate multiple short-term rentals in the area. We, we see an incredible impact of the work that Visit Sacramento does, and we want it to continue. I also speak on behalf of fellow hosts that weren't able to be here or had to leave early. The convention center, farm-to-fork, Ironman, and especially the music festivals create demand that sustain nightly rates and are crucial to supporting the local economy, many of which are small businesses like ours. For our business in particular, we are able to keep local skilled workers busy providing services for cleaning, plumbing, yard maintenance, handymen, electricians, and HVAC repairs at our properties. Our guests are eating at local restaurants and bars, they're visiting multiple attractions, filling the fridge from the grocery stores, and ordering takeout through food delivery apps. In my opinion, Visit Sacramento is a vital contributor to the economy, most importantly to small, small businesses like ours and thrive due to tourism. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Tim Wosley. I see no movement. How about Mac Worthy? Mr. Worthy is our final speaker on this item.
Hotels. A lot of people, with me being from South Carolina, a lot of people ask me what to see, oversight see in Sacramento, since I've been here. Talked to a friend of mine that lost his wife, he said, "Mac, you've been there since December 13, 1960." People, you know, why is it we don't see some reports on the finance that the city brings in from the tourists? Nobody ever brings it up. People saying what they make it of. I'm, I have a green thumb. I've set up yards in Carmichael. It ain't no big money in it, pay. When you're working for somebody else. Elrata Hills, a Jewish friend of mine, I put sprinklers to me. He deceased in Nevada. He always hooked me, set up. The guy from down in, in Land Park, he had a shop at, at, at Fair. People saying housework. I said, "Go to the research. You got to be able to set up to make money on that." And but see, we are not getting the real facts here, is where this money coming. But yet still, we're here in, in a hotel, $8 for a beer. People, this is ridiculous. You know, you, you, you come quick line, people, "Look what those people working for. Minimum wage. Ninety percent of them work for minimum wage, and you set it up here for $8. We need somebody that oversight, is what are you doing? Ninety percent of those ownerships of those hotels don't even live here. The corporations is incorporated somewhere else. We was down in the South Carolina to a school thing, and I was laughing. People, wake up, you got to find out who owned this building. Other people won't do research. You can go to county records and identify who owned those buildings."
Thank you for your comments. I have no more speakers.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Now moving to my colleagues. Councilmember Ergo.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. First, I do want to thank, you know, all of the, our staff and our, the folks at Visit Sacramento and all the partners involved in this. I think one of the exciting things about where we've been going over in the city is moving how, moving the effort of tourism and welcoming communities to our city. You know, and I'll say, maybe that's the theme tonight. The prior item that we held, this item, it's about having a city that people are excited to come to, they want to come to, they want to spend their tax dollars here as well, to support our community as well. So, so one, you know, I wanted to just to thank, you know, Mike and Doug for your efforts, also congratulate you on your citizenship. I got sworn in for my citizenship at the Crest Theater, and when people want to see a historic place like the Crest Theater or Memorial Auditorium, where they're now swearing people in today, those are key assets of California history and places that they get to be here. Bringing, also, I want to talk about, you know, some of where I, I'm excited about seeing the fact that we can continue to land, not only the concerts and the fun events that, you know, pre-kids, I like to go to, you know, Aftershock, maybe I'll make it one of these days, once the kids are after, don't have to have a bedtime anymore. But, but, you know, landing the FFA convention, the spirit of leadership, you know, looking at all those students involved in Future Farmers of America, coming here throughout the state, and it used to be Fresno and other places that, that would take it. But why is that important? Because yes, there may be a group of, of young youth that come here from all over the state to see our, our city, but there's also a, a competition at the end of it, and large scholarships, and what happens when you have youth competition? You have a number of parents that come there and grandparents that come to it. So seeing all of those family people, members that come to support their effort, spend the hotel time here, support our, our tourism, that's where the multiple generation is. And, and all, and I'll add to the next theme that's coming. We have an item coming up about an age-friendly master plan. When people come here, they have to be a place for not only the young people and the parents, but also the grandparents to be able to walk around and to enjoy and to have the available transit options for all of them. So I think tonight's theme is about a welcoming city. And with that, you know, everything, anything we can do to continue to do that, and for those of you who at Visit Sacramento know that I love all of the youth competition, and I know there's other conversations about other ways we can bring more youth competition to our city, because, you know, parents spend a lot of money on their young kids to come out here and, and support them. And with that, Vice Mayor, I will, I will proudly open and close the public hearing and move the item.
Thank you. Thank you. Moved and seconded. Mayor Protem Talamontes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Testa, you and your team do incredible work. You bring events that impact not just our city of Sacramento, local economy, but Placer, Woodland, and every single other jurisdiction in our surrounding area. And honestly, sometimes I don't know how you do it. How many Red Bulls or how many Coffees you have, that you bring the energy for Aftershock, Golden Sky, Soul Bloom, and so much more. And you do it. You do it for us. And your love for Sacramento just continues to shine, so thank you for what you do. Happy to continue supporting this and seeing what else is, is next for us. Thank you.
All right. Mayor Steinberg.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I think when I became mayor seven years ago, I did not fully appreciate just how important Visit Sacramento and this part of our economy was. I just didn't know. And I want to just say to my colleagues who will continue here and those who will come on board, when Mike Testa and the board come to you and the city manager and ask for a million dollars to take a risk and bring the next great festival or set of festivals to this city, find a way to say yes. Find a way to say yes. There is, there are very few investments, smarter investments that we can make than this. This is the good stuff, by the way, and it's one of the few, as I talked about this morning in my State of the Downtown speech, that is one of the few areas where we actually have resources to invest in economic development. I think we need more. But the TOT spent wisely, not only to help Visit Sacramento, but to invest in these destination amenities, is good and great for the people of Sacramento, but it also builds up our economic base in ways that are hard to do otherwise, especially with real public support. So I'm just thrilled that I, that I learned early on just how important this organization and this part of our growth and our vision in Sacramento is. And have fun with this, too. Have fun. This is, this is all that's good and great about building, building a big city, and people want more. They really do. And this is one great way to give it to them. So thank you.
Well said. And with that, Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Talamontes.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Gara.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Mapple.
Yes.
I'll get sitting for a while.
Passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you. Now on to item number nine, 2024 Weed and Rubbish Abatement. The important work of the council. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. I'm Sean Bartosz with the Community Development Department. I'm here today to recommend that the City Council authorize code compliance, the authority to abate weeds, rubbish, refuge, and debris from undeveloped properties that constitute a public nuisance and a fire hazard. The deadline to comply with the weed abatement requirement is April 15th and runs throughout the weed, uh, fire season through October 31st. Staff recommends that the council consider any objections and comments related to this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments on this item?
I have no speakers on this item.
All right.
Second.
Oh, looks like we have one that's come in. Let's, let's hear from the speaker.
It's still a public hearing. Thank you. No problem, Lisa. Gregory Jefferson.
Welcome.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I'd just like to say regarding, before we talk about item nine, thank the mayor for his time being our caretaker. We appreciated you over in District 2, and we kind of wish you could have hung around a little bit longer, but we understand that we do have another person, but it was nice having, speaking directly to you, so, but thank you for the time.
No, I, I enjoyed it. It was good. Yeah, it was good.
Yeah, we enjoyed, we enjoyed our time with you. Speaking of item nine, I hope that Mr. Sean Bartosz and the rest of his crew includes the bike trail and area of District 2. The weeds and the rubbish are horrific there, and when you speak about a nuisance, it used to be people in tents in, on the bike trail and the bike parkway in District 2, and now it has transformed itself into forts, literal four-wall wooden structures with smoke stacks, and so they cut down wood, cut down trees, and they burn their wood in the mornings. And I've seen pots on the stove cooking outside, so it's more, much worse and much more blight than just the tents and the people. It's, it's way worse. The grass is four and a half feet tall, and so I hope that with this item nine, it would include the bike and parkway, or bikeway, I don't know if I'm saying it right, for District 2. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Mr. Bartosz, do you want to speak to that, if you can? Noted. Thank you, Councilmember Kaplan.
I'll second.
Thank you. Seconded.
Yes, we will inspect all the bike trails, anything that's vacant that has no structures on it, whether it's a city property or private property, we'll inspect those for compliance and get those, those situations cut with the weeds and the rubbish.
Thank you very much. All right. Councilmember Ergo, did you have a comment?
No, I will only to ask that if, if the staff could get back to the members of the community about the process. I know the bike trail is a long pathway, but at least giving them a sense of when they'll get to certain parts of it, that would be helpful. Not, not necessarily that, but if they get back to the staff, to the folks about the process, thank you.
Thank you very much. Great, great point. Councilmember Jennings.
Yeah, just to clarify, Councilmember Ergo's point, with the newly appointed council member that we put in, if you can communicate with that office to make sure that they're aware of the work that's going to be done and what will happen, so that they can then communicate with the public, I think that would be the right order to do it. Thank you.
Noted. Thank you very much. Not seeing any of my colleagues, we will take a voice vote on this item. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Absentions, no's, all right. That passes unanimously. All right. Now on to item number 10, Corporate Way Retail Pad and Drive-Thru. We have a presentation.
It's been continued, hasn't it?
Oh, this has been continued.
I think it's passed.
This is public.
Good evening. My name is Zach Doll, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. The item before you tonight is the Corporate Way Retail Pad with Drive-Thru Project, located north of 7375 Greenhaven Drive. The applicant is requesting to construct a commercial building consisting of a suite for a Dutch Bros coffee drive-thru and a second suite for future restaurant use. To facilitate the development, the applicant is requesting a reason of the project site to the general commercial zone, PUD text and schematic and plan amendments to the Greenhaven Executive Park PUD to amend the permitted uses and to redesignate the site for commercial office, restaurant, and drive-thru restaurant uses. Conditional use permit for a drive-thru restaurant Conditional use permit for a drive-thru restaurant, site plan and design review of the development, and a tree permit for the removal of one private protected tree. The Planning and Design Commission reviewed the project at the February 22nd meeting and forwards approval recommendation consistent with staff's recommendation. And with that, staffs will be able to answer any questions you have. And the developer, Paul Frank, is here tonight to address the commission.
Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
I do have one. It's Xylor.
Please welcome.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor and council members, for giving me this opportunity to share my concern. I want, I am in support of this recommendation. However, I want to notify the council that as you make these decisions to improve and bring business to Corporate Way, you consider my concern about the traffic path and, more importantly, the safety of my clients. I am the owner of Ayah Taekwondo, a martial arts school located directly across from the parcel at 7385 Greenhaven. We service over 300 students and parents every weekday and from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m., and then 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. and to 9:00 p.m. on Saturday. During this time, there is very heavy traffic, and there are young children occupying the parking lot and also the streets. They come from on foot, from the neighborhood, on bikes, and of course by cars. As you make these changes to improve Corporate Way, please consider the traffic pattern so it doesn't negatively impact the safety of our community members. As this, as this will directly impact my clients and myself, I am available for conversation if needed. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you very much to the speaker. Thank you for coming down tonight. And my chief of staff, Dennis Rogers, is in the back, and so you can have a conversation with him tonight, and he'll talk to you about the transportation mitigation procedures that we'll go through to make sure that the traffic does not impact the business any more than it should. Okay? Dennis Rogers is right there.
Wonderful.
So with that, I'd like to open and close the public hearing and move the item.
Second.
All right. Been moved and seconded. Was it Councilmember Gara's a second? Wonderful. With this, I will take a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Abstained, opposed? All right. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Now, colleagues, we move on to the discussion calendar. Item number 11, Age-Friendly Community Action Plan.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Andrea Villarreal, and I am an associate planner with the Community Development Department. I want to thank you all for having me here today to share our Age-Friendly Community Action Plan. We are asking council to adopt this action plan to begin the three-year implementation Tonight, I'm going to give a quick overview of what the Age-Friendly Community Action Plan is, our planning process and efforts thus far, what we have heard from the community, and end with next steps for the action plan. In 2019, the city enrolled in AARP's network of age-friendly communities. As part of joining the network, the city committed to analyzing the needs of older adults in our community and taking action over a three-year period. The action plan is based on AARP's eight domains of livability, which are community features that impact the well-being of older adults and help make communities more livable. These domains serve as the framework that helped us organize and prioritize our work. Additionally, the voices of our community members have been essential in determining these actions, plans, priorities, and their feedback helped guide the action plan's goals and actions. Ultimately, our action plan is a short-term plan based on the eight domains of livability that aims to enhance the health and quality of life for older adults in Sacramento. In order to develop this action plan, the team conducted comprehensive research on the conditions facing older adults and best practices of age-friendly communities. The team also convened a working group, which included 21 individuals with backgrounds that provided them with expert insight. We also performed community outreach for this plan as part of the 2040 General Plan, which involves stakeholder interviews, citywide workshops, pop-up events, listening sessions, and numerous of other public participation opportunities. All this work helped us develop a community needs assessment, which allowed us to better understand our community priorities. This allowed the team to move forward, and working together with the working group, developed this plan's goals and actions. The team also collaborated with staff across city departments to ensure these actions would be implementable within this action plan's three-year timeframe. All this great effort resulted in the action plan that I'm sharing with you tonight. As I mentioned in the previous slide, the community needs assessment helped us better understand our community priorities and also identified certain areas for consideration that needed more focus than others to ensure that all residents in Sacramento are able to age in place. The community priorities are organized into three tiers, with tier one representing the highest priority. These priorities are ranked based on existing supply of resources in Sacramento, the level of satisfaction indicated via community input, and the degree to which they can positively impact age-friendliness and livability for older adults. It is worth noting that this plan focuses on short-term actions, and the city is actively working on addressing the needs of older adults. And additional longer-term actions can be found in the housing element, the 2040 General Plan, and the draft parks plan 2040. Our action plan is made up of three chapters and four appendices. The first chapter introduces the concept of age-friendly communities. It explains our planning process and details the community priorities for this plan. The second chapter is a demographic analysis of the city with a focus on older adults. And the third chapter is the action plan, and it is organized into seven sections. Each section starts with a summary of conditions and trends, a goal that represents a desired vision, and a table with implementing actions. Appendix A includes actions that are already in progress or existing programs for older adults. Appendix B includes additional suggestions that were explored through the creation of this plan, but were not implementable within the action plan's three-year timeframe. Appendix C is a summary of the feedback received during the public review period, and Appendix D is a community needs assessment. Now let's take a look at our efforts over the past few months. We released a public review draft on December 22nd, and the public review period was open until February 9. During this period, we collected feedback on the public review draft through an online platform, presented to various commissions, and worked with older adult services staff who did direct engagement at our senior centers. The majority of the feedback focused on these four categories: pedestrian friendliness, housing, expanding outreach and communication, and expanding reach of services. Goals and implementing actions addressing these categories can be found in Chapter Three of the action plan. Tonight, we are bringing the plan to council for adoption. Once adopted, we will begin the implementation phase. At the end of the action plan's three-year timeframe, we will assess our progress. In closing, staff recommends that council pass a motion adopting the Age-Friendly Community Action Plan. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the thorough presentation. Very exciting. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Do I have speaker, three speakers on this item? Patty Waite, Christina Zhang, and then Dana Akiya Miranda.
Welcome.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and City Council. My name is Patty Waite. I'm a lifetime resident of the city of Sacramento.
Oh, darn it. Yeah, where's she going?
I am also a member and a volunteer with the AARP. I was standing here not long ago as chair of the Sacramento County Adult and Aging Commission when the city joined the network. I was here to welcome them when Mayor Steinberg and members of the council decided to join. Since that time, AARP has been proud to work with the city on developing the Age-Friendly Action Plan before you today. This plan supports the efforts of Sacramento becoming an even better place for all ages by adopting features such as safe, walkable streets, better housing and transportation options, access to services, and opportunities for all residents to participate in community activities. On behalf of the more than 70,000 members in Sacramento and the 3.2 million across the state of California, we thank you. The city of Sacramento now joins 90 jurisdictions who have, as a part of AARP's network of age-friendly states and communities, committed to becoming more age-friendly. Thank you for your time. AARP stands ready to work with you on the implementation of this plan.
Thank you.
Speaker is Christina.
My name is Christina Zhang, and I'm from Civic Thread, formerly known as Walk Sacramento. So as a public health professional working in the intersection of transportation, I'm in support of the Age-Friendly Community Draft Plan and identify that Goal One will be vital to ensuring safe and accessible connectivity to important destinations including healthcare, food, parks, socialization, and many more benefits for the aging community. So through our engagements alongside valued partners like AARP, government partners, and community champions, we learn from the older adult lived experience and their accessibility barriers navigating around the city. We hear consistent feedback about challenges across our priority areas. Crosswalk timing should be longer so I can get across with my walker or wheelchair. Sidewalks should be extended and maintained so my walker doesn't get stuck on cracks and so my wheelchair can fit and I'm not on the street. And also, I need safer routes to my local park so I can spend time with my grandkids but not fear for our life on the way to it. Inaccessibility to parks and healthy destinations limit opportunities to daily physical activity, social interaction, accessing amenities, and simply being outdoors. From my past work in working with folks living with cognitive change, "if you don't use it, you lose it" was commonly said. As we see the prevalence of Alzheimer's climb locally, we have also seen the local county death rate for Alzheimer's double in the last decade. We understand factors such as isolation and lack of movement and stimulation all impact the cognitive decline. While we are speaking in support of improved and enhanced environments designed for all ages and abilities, we are saying we want to see quality of life, preventative lifestyles and care, and less undignified deaths and suffering. So we are hopeful this plan will bring along policies, funding opportunities, and holistic intersectional approaches to create more pathways for meaningful quality of life for our valued older adult community. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our final speaker is Dana.
Oh, no. Okay. All right. Hi, everyone. My name is Dana Aika Miranda. Also with Civic Thread, I'm a project coordinator there. I'm a former resident of District Five and a new resident to District Seven. With an intersectional background in cultural, gender, and ethnic studies, I want to speak in strong regard and support of this plan, especially on Goal Four, which is on respect, inclusion, and social participation in the draft plan. I'd like to, I'd like you to take a second just to think about how when you're super stressed, like, you start like panic cleaning. Or like, when you're, in the winter, you might notice your mood drop, or when during COVID and quarantine, everyone's mental health as like a whole society just substantially declined. This is a simple microcosm of how much our physical space impacts our very well-being. When I was working in a senior assisted living home in college during COVID before vaccination was produced, a surge of deaths occurred in which, under social isolation. According to peer-reviewed research on the National Library of Medicine, it found a significant 33% higher hazard of all-cause mortality among those who are socially isolated. In its entirety for older adults, it has elevated that this demographic of our communities are more susceptible to isolation, accessibility challenges, financial insecurity, and other barriers to both optimal health and community integration. By supporting this plan and its explicit point on expanding opportunities that are inclusive and welcoming for older adults, the creation of intergenerational and inclusive spaces would offer preventative measures through increased opportunities to build a diverse support network, expand healthy food access, offer safe and clean spaces to engage in independent and dependent healthy living. Please do not remove yourself from the significance of implementing this plan. Aging is something that should not be grounds for being considered a burden or a rasure from our communities. It is a privilege when so many young people...
If you have comments, your time is complete.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that our final speaker?
It is our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. On to my colleagues. Councilmember Gara.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. First, let me just thank all of the members of AARP and our volunteers and citizens, citizen who have volunteered in our advisory group. Let's give them a big round of applause for also enduring the long night tonight. And, and one, to first say that I was very proud to vote in 2019, the first acknowledgement of staffs in changing how we view our general plan, how we view our housing elements, all of the factors, looking at transportation in a different way. Transportation not about moving cars, but about having a place for people and thinking about that context, not for just those today who are working and living, but also those who want to enjoy the rest of our city in a different way. And, and I want to just commend the staff here for what they've put together as well, and to say that this is, this is a great plan. And plans are great, but if we don't do any implementation, and we don't, and some of these are long-term infrastructure plans that will take a long time. And just like the conversation we had with our Active Transportation Commission earlier, some of these may be years and decades in the making. Well, that may not be available for those of all age-friendly of today. And so, one, I'm very supportive of this plan. So first, I will proudly move this item, Vice Mayor Maple, and also provide some direction to our staff that we look at some immediate things we can do soon. And I'll talk about some of those, like all red intersections, because figuring out how we address the crosswalks and walking areas and making sure that we make it easily accessible so that, you know, so often we see that green light and all of a sudden someone's flying a red light and not allowing that crosswalk to start turning green so that folks who are trying to cross the street, and some of our avenues are four lanes with a center divide lane. That's five lanes to cross for folks. And whether you're, you're a young person, like Javier was here, or a person like my father-in-law, who, you know, now is driving less and less and walking more and more, to me, I think that needs to be addressed because our intersections and our safety units have to be age-friendly for everyone, not just the vehicles. Second, I think there are things that have been on the books for a while, and I'm going to bring up, you know, you know, the fact that I have some senior centers that are next to Broadway, you know? Crossing Broadway can be a challenge. Both those in Tahoe Park or on Monroe Avenue. East Ranch is a, is a senior community that we've put on, had for a long time, an intersection there since the first day when I was campaigning in 2015 and almost got hit crossing the road. But not only is that a crossing area that my understanding, so I'd like Public Works to follow up on this, that has already been designed, that we had designed, and the community there put in, I think it was 150K for some, for some of the work as well. But on one side, you have senior centers. On the other side, you have, you have a high school on Latham and Monroe. So I'd like to make sure we look at, where are the ones that we could make a dent in and move forward? And, and then also to thank, you know, our Public Works folks when they responded quickly, both at, with our CDVG funds and the limited dollars we have, for example, in Area Lemon Hill. And I want to bring up Lemon Hill again because in both of those instances, we had one grandmother walking with her four-year-old crossing Lemon Hill and was hit. And so we were able to get some crossing intersections there and in Elder Creek through CDVG funds. And then we had, not that, that much later on, another grandmother who was leaving the temple and coming back and was hit on Lemon Hill and Stockton Boulevard. And I appreciate the fact that we looked at that... And I appreciate the fact that we looked at that corridor, which had not only senior centers but also a middle school there. So there are things that I think that we can do immediately as part of this. There are things that, like building out more senior centers, like the Heart Center, the fact that our Heart Center, I want to thank the fact and recognize that we have, you know, Los Amigos there, which is a Spanish culturally focused senior center, and how much energy and life it's brought. But building a new senior center has to be part of our plan for other folks to participate in, but that may not happen for a while. And we need to, I think, as part of this plan, again, on this direction, what are some immediate things we can do? The Sacramento Chinese, the China Friendship Association at the temple on Elder Creek, they know that mental health is a challenge for many of our aging population because of isolation, because they don't see them. And so what they've done is they do a vegetarian brunch once a month during the Hungry Moon Festival to bring community, to help them provide at least a place where they're going to see people once a month. But yet, their community is becoming older and older where they can't drive anymore. Transportation becomes a challenge. So there may be opportunities where maybe we can't build a more senior center. I know we're looking at an API senior community over on the 12-acre site that we're working with WellSpace as part of the capstone product to do something. That's eight years out, you know? That's a ways away. What can we do today with working with some of our other community groups to enhance and the component, I think, about this action plan is not just brick and mortar, it's how we feel about our community. It's looking at ways and talking about the things that we're messaging, not just the things we're building and planning, but the way we are expanding folks and saying we're welcoming there. So I'm excited about this. You know, unfortunately, some of us may have always experienced the unfortunate accidents just on basic sidewalks. My mother-in-law unfortunately fell and broke her hip most recently as she was training for her hike to Machu Picchu. So it wasn't that she didn't want to, it was the fact that we needed better accessibility. My own grandmother, a while back ago, also had that. Of course, it was in sidewalks in Mexico, and I think Javier was telling Ms. Mai that the sidewalks are lumpy over there, and that's what he reconciled. But those are issues. Many of us have had folks in our family who want to be part of that community, and this is such a big piece because we have to be planning for everyone in our city. So excited to move this, excited to see where we are today. I wish it could have been before. I know the pandemic slowed us a little bit down, but at the same time, it forced everybody to walk outside and recognize and see, because everybody was out, how myopic some of our planning had become and has brought this forward. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. All right. So we have a motion from Councilmember Gara and a second by Councilmember Kaplan. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Once again, I want to commend our planning staff. I have been on the council, what, we're at 15 months or so now? I've seen an update in the general plan, the climate action plan, and now the age-friendly community action plan. I hope you all are taking vacation. Because if you don't know, the general plan is huge, and the climate action plan is huge, and doing this is huge. But I think doing this in such a short amount of time very much highlights how everything is layering on each other. When we plan, we can't do it in isolation, and we have to think about things. And one of the things, you know, that I see is my mom walks with a cane and walks much slower. When we look at our age-friendly, we're also embracing our community with disabilities and understanding specifically if we're looking at, because you can see in D1 and on the maps, that I have a significant elder population in Natomas. Where are our seniors living? And are there certain areas where maybe we do need to specifically look at the crosswalks and make them just a little longer? Where are those places which might be easy wins when we look at, because I have two huge age-restricted areas where our seniors live, but also I represent Robla, which brings in a huge community of our disadvantaged elders, and some of those areas don't have sidewalks. And that's a problem and things we need to look at. Our seniors are our fastest-growing population here in Sacramento, and that bears repeating because from 2010, there's been a steady growth in our senior population, growing from 10% to 13%. But it's also something we have to take a look at because it's our fastest-growing population in poverty. And how are we addressing that when we look at an age-friendly community plan? Some of our seniors in poverty, it really is, and I appreciate that one of the top-tier issues is housing security because they are on a fixed income. And if they are renting, you know, where do they go and what do they do? But also realizing when poverty, they're in places that are not as prolific in parks and amenities. And so how are we looking at, because this comes into our general plan and discussion of our housing element, where are we looking at age-restricted senior housing for our seniors that are near parks and near amenities that they can walk to a grocery store and walk to a park? Because then that brings in the whole walkability that is part of this plan. And then I will specifically say for District One, again, I'm thankful to be in RT, but I got two bus lines. Our seniors really can't get anywhere if you're not driving. And then you're begging somebody. And then I do know Stanford Settlement in South Natomas goes up to North Natomas to pick up seniors, and we have no place to hang out in North Natomas unless you are part of the HOAs that are age-restricted. But I also talked to a lot of my seniors in my community that are not part of there, and they have nowhere to go. And if they even wanted to get down to South Natomas, they can't because there isn't a bus connection that really makes sense. Sure, they can go from North Natomas down to Trucksville, and then what? El Camino is like a mile and a half to Stanford Settlement, maybe waiting for another bus that might be able to pick them up. And then it's not thinking about it, you know, what about our seniors who might be disabled? Some seniors might do that and take their bike, and they can bike, but then it's not safe to bike on West El Camino. I used to live down there, and there it is a raceway through there. So I think this community action plan is definitely needed, and I think we need to be very conscientious that, I can tell you, our staff, you guys do a phenomenal job with plans. Now, please hold us as a city council accountable because we need to layer on these and bring back what is it going to cost to implement these? Because we need to know that to be able to talk to the community. Because when we're talking about some of these things, you know, we're talking about how do we do roadwork, and how do we upgrade things, and how do we make it bicycle-friendly? That's going to take money we don't have. When we barely have money to pay for our potholes, how are we going to implement these when we don't have the money? But knowing, so I would love to see the next step while we have this, you know, community, you know, age-friendly action plan, what are the priorities and what do dollars look like as they're attached to it? Because this is only as good as we start implementing. And I want to see as we talk the next process, which I see our wonderful volunteers, which some of you I know, and I know how active you are, you know, coming together and saying, how do we start implementing this? Great, great plan, but what's the next step? And what do we look at as priority? Because I think that will also help us if we do that, if there are grants, if there are infrastructure grants. ARP has a lot of grants. But if we know where we're putting it and how we're putting it, and it's already been laid out, it makes it easier to get grant accessible. So I want this plan not just to live as a document, as a good read, but as something that we can implement. And I specifically want us as a city to look at, because equity does matter, and you look at, you know, my community as it rolls into District Two. That is where poverty, a majority of poverty is with age-restricted. And that is our population that does not speak English, that does not understand what they can advocate for. So we have to look at, as the city, how can we advocate for them? Because I will tell you, those areas don't have sidewalks, and people are living in isolation. So, but it then ties into our housing plan. Because I can tell you, in North Natomas with some of my new housing, what we're seeing is developers building in permanent ADUs because we have multi-generation. So being aware, where is that happening, and how do we address where we know we're going to need more potential gathering places for seniors if they're living with their families so they're not in isolation? So it's a, I kind of threw a lot out there. I see Matt taking notes. As always, I appreciate you and your team, and I appreciate the advocacy by AARP to push this forward, but I want to see us do something, not just have a great plan. So I appreciate all the work that you've done in moving this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Talamontes.
Vice Mayor, on behalf of my 88-year-old grandma, Mama Licha, who lives in Willows, California, but my mom takes care of her many days out of the week here in Sacramento, thank you for the work that you do. It's when I go out with her to eat here in downtown or to shift around Natomas, it's when I really feel firsthand the impacts of how transit isn't designed for our seniors or sidewalks, like Councilmember Kaplan said. And so just thank you so much for the work that you do. You're an incredible organization and happy to support you.
Thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yeah, thank you. Echo my colleagues' comments about implementation and gratitude to AARP. Oh, AARP card being flashed out there. Some of us get those in the mail and don't like it, so, but we'll get there soon. I also, I do want to thank staff because I know I sent a lot of questions and ideas and feedback to you up until just a couple weeks ago, and you really took all of that and incorporated it. Because we know that the issues faced by seniors are faced by a lot of people. It's just felt so much more acutely when you're a senior citizen, right? Like, I remember doing outreach in Valley High when we were starting the first environmental justice outreach and speaking to Amanda, an elder, through a translator, who said, well, I don't take the bus. He can't drive, but he doesn't take the bus. And I said, well, why? And he's like, well, because the stops were only announced in English, and I'm worried I'm going to miss my stop, right? So like, easy thing to do with language access, which you included in the plan, and I'm really excited about. Our literacy, you know, my colleague, Councilmember Gara, mentioned Los Menitos at the Heart Senior Center. They weren't taking paratransit. Paratransit is available to all seniors with limited mobility in the RT service area. And when we asked them why, they're like, well, the application is in Spanish, but we can't read that level of Spanish. And so there was a literacy gap issue with elders that needed to be addressed with direct outreach so that they could take advantage. Or even the housing problems, which we know all of us, and I say us because I'm also a renter in the central city, all of us are at risk of displacement and escalated costs, but particularly for seniors who are on fixed income and who are one of our growing subpopulations on the streets right now. And so I just really want to thank and reiterate not just the intentionality of focus behind the plan, your interest and ability to incorporate all of my, I think I sent you like this marathon email of like, here's all my thoughts, and you incorporated all of it, which was incredible. But like, what comes next is always the question, and it does come down to resources and to all of those. But I think that is something that, as we look at racial equity, as we look at all these different lenses that we look at our policies through, when we're doing our housing element implementation updates, when we're doing these other climate updates, how are we also looking at this as a lens that we keep evaluating ourselves through so that we can be intentional about making decisions that are being thoughtful about what our elders need? So that's all my comments. Thank you again, and thank you to all the advocates who stayed through very long meeting to be here with us for this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bang.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. I'll keep my comments short. First, I just wanted to take this time to thank our planning staff, Elizabeth and Andrew, to thank you so much for your hard work to get us to this moment, and just really to all the community advocates. I want to thank AARP just for your continued advocacy in the community. I know this is called an age-friendly community action plan, but it's really a plan for all ages. You know, I think we heard from our colleagues, you know, what is good for our elders is also good for the entire community, right? It's good for our youth, for our people with disability, for all people. We also know that humans are living longer, right? And it's so important to make sure that we're creating the type of conditions so that they can make healthier choices. Because even if we're living longer, it doesn't necessarily mean that as elders, as seniors, that they're living healthier or better, right? And so there are disparities. I know Councilwoman Kaplan touched a little bit about this. There are disparities in neighborhoods where elders live, and that's why the plan is so important, right? I think the most important part of this is I think it's going to, you know, we're going to pass this, put this forth, but it's the accountability piece, right? What does that look like, and how do we hold ourselves to that as we're moving forward on all our plans? And so just wanted to just put that on record, but just say, great job to everybody who worked really hard on this plan, and really looking forward to making sure that we implement this with our limited budget, right? What can we do now? And so just thank you, everyone, for your hard work.
Thank you, Councilmember Bang. And I'll just, you know, I'll make my comments brief because, you know, everyone had amazing points to make, and I just really want to thank our staff for putting this together in partnership with AARP. When I had the opportunity to meet with you and learn about what you do as an organization, I was, it kind of blew my mind, honestly. I was like, I didn't realize that you do all of this. So I really, you know, recommend to anyone in the community who may be watching this, reach out and see, there might be things for you even if you're not of qualified age yet. There's still a lot of opportunities for you to get involved and be connected. And I especially appreciate your partnership on projects. So for example, the Oak Park Community Center, you can go there and workout at an AARP-sponsored gym, which is beautiful and fun. I always see people from the community out there, so I just appreciate that. One thing in particular that I noticed as we're talking about this, and others have mentioned it too, is the connection between all of the other things that we're doing, right? Transportation and housing, Streets for People, Vision Zero, right? We're seeing a lot of themes in all of these various plans that, you know, like Councilwoman Valenzuela mentioned, that we're all connected regardless of age, that we are experiencing similar issues, but those issues are more acute. They are felt more by those who have less mobility, for example, who have less income, who have less access to resources and so on. And so I think it's really important that we think about this in context of all those other plans, making sure that it fits in and aligns, which I'm sure you are already doing because you're brilliant and you all talk to each other and coordinate. And so I really do appreciate that. There's one thing in particular that, the section HA3 that I appreciated, I have a very high concentration of senior housing in my district, especially in the Fairgrounds area, where we have high-rise senior housing, and then in the south area of my district as well. And that outreach and education in multiple languages is really important because a lot of those seniors do not speak English, don't have access to a lot of that, and as you mentioned, I think that's very important because if it doesn't come to you in a way that you can consume it and understand it, then you're not going to know what resources are available to you, and that's going to make it even harder. So I just appreciate that focus. Also really appreciated the focus on fair housing and tenant protections. Again, this is something that's impacting a lot of people, especially in my district and others, where people are having a hard time finding housing that they can afford and staying in it. I think knowing what's available to you and your resources as a tenant in languages that you can understand are really important, so especially on the senior side. And so just grateful for all of the work on this plan, another really good one. As Councilmember Kaplan mentioned, we really need to make sure that we're not just talking about it, but we're doing it, we're matching it with numbers and seeing how it aligns with our budget. And of course, it may not all happen at once. We are in a budget deficit, but that we do have a plan in place is really important.
All right. Thank you. So seeing no other comments from my colleagues, all right, I will do a voice vote on this item. All those in favor, please say aye. No, abstention. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Wonderful work. And thank you to everyone. All right, colleagues. Now we will move to council comments, ideas, and questions. Item 12? Oh, I'm sorry. Moving us along. They're like, did that get postponed? No, I just, it's just been a long day. I apologize. Moving on to item 12. Thank you. Our 2023 Housing Element Annual Progress Report.
Thank you so much.
Greta, welcome.
Thanks, all. Good evening, council. I'm here tonight presenting our 2023 Annual Progress Report and Midterm Evaluation of Implementation Programs. So every April, the city is required to submit a Housing Element Annual Progress Report to the state. The report provides status updates on the city's adopted implementation programs and a report out on the housing production numbers for the prior calendar year. In addition to reviewing our progress towards our housing element production goals, staff is also making recommendations on our required midterm evaluation of implementation programs per implementation program H22. The 2021-2029 Housing Element Planning Period housing target is 45,580 housing units, which is broken down by income level from extremely and very low-income housing to above moderate-income housing. And this housing target is assigned to the city by the state. It is known as the city's Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or RENA for short. When we break down that housing target over the eight-year period, we must produce about 5,700 units annually across all income levels. In 2023, we produced a total of 2,600 housing units. This is a 7% decrease in overall housing production from 2022 to 2023. This graph shows our 2023 housing production numbers by income level in comparison to the projected need averaged over the eight-year planning period. In 2023, the city met about half of its low-income target and surpassed its moderate-income target. In 2023, the city met about half of its low-income target and surpassed its moderate-income target, but fell shorter in production across the remaining income levels. 29% of total production was in the low, very low, or extremely low-income categories, including non-deed-restricted units. This chart shows the units produced by income level and includes the breakdown of deed-restricted and non-deed-restricted units. Notable deed-restricted affordable projects that counted towards the 2023 calendar year numbers include Stockton Boulevard Mixed Use, Studio 30 on Broadway, Mirasol Village Block D, 39th and Broadway Senior Housing, and Home Key SAC Central Studios. While deed-restricted unit production is critical to ensure long-term affordable housing in our community, we know we cannot meet our lower-income arena with deed-restricted units alone, given current funding availability. To meet our lower-income housing need through only regulated affordable housing, we would need to secure about $7.5 billion over the planning period, with the city of Sacramento's portion being about $2 billion. So in order for us to meet this tremendous need for lower-cost housing, we must build more regulated affordable housing, but also must build more lower-cost housing that does not require subsidies such as multi-unit housing or accessory dwelling units. This figure shows our ADU production since 2013. The 2023 calendar year showed a 7% increase in ADU building permits over 2022. And this shows that we've also surpassed our target that we established in 2021 of 680Us within the planning period by already producing 644 ADUs in the past three years. We expect these numbers to continue to increase with the many new resources launched in late 2022, including an ADU Resource Center with free shelf-ready ADU plans. Moving on to our implementation program updates, this graph shows the number of implementation programs we committed to by implementation timeframe. We committed to completing over a third of our programs in the short term and a third of them in the annual and ongoing category. Thus far, we've completed nine programs. Thirteen are in progress, 12 have not been started yet, and 15 are annual and ongoing. Program H22 of the Housing Element commits the city to a midterm evaluation of the implementation programs. Specifically, it commits us to evaluating the effectiveness of the implementation programs in meeting their stated objectives and recommending adjustments to programs that are not on track to meet these objectives. Attachment four of the staff report includes an evaluation of each of our nine completed implementation programs. In 2023, we completed four programs of the nine total completed thus far, shown in bold here, and made significant progress on many other programs. In 2023, we completed our Housing Development Toolkit. We conducted outreach to promote our ADU Resource Center and completed programs nine and 13 listed here. While all of these are considered completed, we will continue to build on this work and look for ways to continue supporting these program objectives. Some of our in-progress programs are listed here. We made significant progress on Program H1, Review of the Mixed-Income Housing Ordinance, in 2023. Related to Program 3, Establishing New Sources of Funding for Affordable Housing, we are currently conducting voter polling for a potential vacant property tax, which we'll be bringing to law and legislation later this spring. Program 8, Revisions to Parking Requirements, is also underway, as we no longer require a minimum level of parking as of March 28th due to the adopted 2040 general plan. Additional vehicle and bike parking recommendations will be complete by the end of 2024. We're also completing Program H15, Permitting Requirements for Special Needs Housing in 2024, bless you, which will include updates to our code related to low-barrier navigation centers, emergency shelters, supportive housing, SROs, and group homes. We'll also be focusing on our Affordable Infill Housing Educational Campaign program this year. We're currently developing educational web materials for this and are planning to conduct outreach events later this year. Based on the evaluation provided in Attachment four, staff is not recommending making formal adjustments to implementation programs, but is seeking council input on this recommendation and potential adjustments to implementation details and priorities. As you know, a Planning and Zoning Work Program is adopted by City Council each year that directs staff priorities and includes Housing Element Implementation Programs. The 2024 Planning and Zoning Work Program was adopted by City Council on February 6, 2024, and directs staff to implement eight Housing Element Programs in 2024. This concludes my presentation, and I am happy to answer questions.
Ms. Seuss, and my apologies for almost skipping over you, my tiredness. Councilmember Kaplan.
I just, any public comments?
That is a great question. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have Jonathan Cook, but I believe he has left, so no comments on this item.
Thank you. My coffee has worn off officially. Councilmember Kaplan.
It is quite all right, Vice Mayor. We have, we started our day early, so we didn't even get a lag to starting a long day. It was definitely a jump start, so I think we're all just a little, a little tired. Again, thanks, staff, for doing all of this. You know, one of the things that I think it's, we're required by the state to do this, but it doesn't tell the true story of, well, we can streamline things, and we have a city are a pro-housing city. We can't control interest rates. We can't control construction costs. We can't control the availability or ability of a developer to come through and pull things for financing. So part of my question is, is like, we've got these audacious goals. The state wants us to have these audacious goals. We've not put up any barriers as the city of Sacramento, but what happens when we don't meet it?
That's a great question. There is no penalty for jurisdictions not meeting their regional housing needs allocations. It's, the majority of jurisdictions in the state do not meet their regional housing needs through the planning periods, but, you know, our, the jurisdictions are required to plan for it, as you know, ensure there's adequate land zoned to meet that need. But, like you said, you know, we can't control external factors, so the state doesn't do anything when we don't meet those goals. Does that answer your question?
It does. I think it's one of those things that has to be asked, because we need the public to understand while we have these big goals. But also, you see in the news that some jurisdictions are getting sued by the AG. You know, they don't have their housing plans in, and they're not certified. And where does that put all of us? Does it affect our ability to get state grants or to get in line for stuff?
Our pro-housing designation definitely helps us become more competitive. I think the state really steps in in those instances, like you said, when jurisdictions are not following Housing Accountability Act law, when they, you know, don't have a compliant housing element, which we, you know, we have a compliant housing element, and we are, you know, going above and beyond per our pro-housing designation. So, you know, I think they're starting to bring in some carrots for us to, for doing that, that work and having pro-housing policies. But yeah, nothing, nothing else that I can really think of.
Yeah, Matt Hurdle, Manager of Long Range Planning. No, that's a great summary. I would just add that the state is requiring jurisdictions to even submit this on time every year, if you want to be eligible for infrastructure affordable housing funding. So there is a lot of reasons to really be on top of this. But, you know, we obviously go beyond for City Sacramento. We want to be the leader in the state. We are the leader in the state. We're going to continue to do that. And so, but yeah, we're, we just got another, we're just applying for another $1.5 million for the pro-housing. So we're going to continue to try to get as many resources as we can to build the housing we need.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. And again, it's like one of these of, it's a report that layers on everything else we're doing, and I think it needs to set the stage as it's part of the facts that we're building as we talk about, you know, the missing middle. And what are we doing to make sure we see holistically that we don't address just things in pockets? Because the missing middle, we need more duplexes and triplexes and fourplexes and ADUs, and to streamline things to help address everything that we're talking about, but it also allows us to create more affordability, to meet some of the designations that we're kind of missing more on the lower end. And I will just say, you know, Sacramento is different, and Natomas got really hard, hit hard, the flood moratorium. We don't talk about that a lot, but when you think about, we in Sacramento could not build for five, six years, especially in Natomas, in a school district that was growing, and we couldn't even put portables down. We had to put kids in commercial buildings because of the flood moratorium. We, as the city of Sacramento, missed between 6,000 and 8,000 housing units at minimum coming in during that time that we would already have on the books. So I don't know if that is ever part of the conversation you have, but that makes Sacramento very unique. So since we've come out of the flood moratorium, I think we have done, you know, a yeoman's job trying to balance things out and making sure that we are getting a mix of affordability to meet our housing plan. But again, just want to say thank you.
Thank you. It's receiving file.
It's review and comment.
But we appreciate it. It is, Councilmember Guerra.
It's late, so I'll just say, you know, appreciate this work, and I wanted to, one, I'm going to take this time to also pull up some constituent issues here from District 6, but one thing I did want to recognize, Figure 1, City of Sacramento Housing Production 2006 to 2023, what, I think the important thing, while we have to hit our 5,700 mark, the important thing about this demographic and the information here is, the more rainbow color we see, the better. I mean, I think that's the big story here, because that helps us address different income levels. Whereas in one side, we had an extremely amount of above-moderate numbers, and on the other side, based on our, the policies that we've taken on over the last few years, you see immediately the diversification of options. And that's important, because my father-in-law sent me an interesting article from the San Francisco Chronicle highlighting Sacramento's success in this. And he's from the Bay Area, and he was saying, "Look, you know, it seems like you guys are getting recognized." And while it's hard to accept accolades when we still have a large gap to meet, the important thing, again, on this item is that we're building much more variety types of housing, and we're trying to meet, you know, the different needs of the market. When you go to the grocery store, you just don't buy one type of cereal. Like, you have different types of products that people need in different income levels. So I think that's an important piece. One of the key things is also the ADU production. Oh, but before I move on to that, the other thing that was highlighted, and it was brought before, Matt, I think you recognized it, we're beating and surpassing every other city of our comparable in the amount of affordable housing we're building, with the exception of Davis. But that's, Davis has, is beating us because of student housing, which has parents that are funding, you know, that lower-income level. So I think the fact that we're outbeating other cities, you know, Oakland and others on production, I think is great, you know. But to the point that I wanted to bring up, success in ADU construction, and how much demand is still moving forward, I think that's great. But I have heard over and over again, very countless times, of just the frustration of the ADU process. And it seems that they're getting through the community development side and getting approved, but as soon as they get to building and on the building side, the entire plan has to be completely shifted, and an architect has to come in. There has to be different changes. It's not, once I've heard it, I've heard it multiple times. And so what I want to make sure that happens here forward, and I'm not asking for an answer today, but that we figure out how to bridge this gap between the design and approval of the plan and then the actual construction. Because folks that are trying to take advantage of the ADU process are just working-class folks who say, "Hey, you know what? This works for my family," or "It works for a little bit of income." You know, and by the time that they're done, they're paying an architect three or four times than they expected, the time of delay, all of those pieces that I think are moving forward. And so I want to make sure that we're hitting that piece, because I do think the ADU opportunity is helping deal with what's, what we have as a built-out city, you know. That way, we can address some of those points there. With that, I'll leave it there. And all to say is that when we have $2 billion as a mark, $2 billion to be able to build deed-restricted, it's highly important that we continue policies that are giving us that rainbow color of diversity in income levels there. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Well-stated. Thank you. Mayor Protem Talamontes.
Last time, we didn't get a chance to thank staff for the general plan. And Matt, it was your birthday, and it was something that you worked on for many, many years, and you had to walk away. So thank you so much for all your hard work on this and the Housing Element Plan, Greta, Tom, everyone here. Appreciate you. Happy belated birthday, too.
All right. Seeing no other comments from my colleagues. This is a receive-and-file. Thank you so much for your very, very hard work. This is incredibly important to the city. As you know, I'm sure you hear it all the time. Housing is the most important thing to a lot of residents in this city. Being able to live here affordably and have a place to live is crucial. So thank you for your hard work. All right. Now, moving on to our favorite section here. But I'm going to take a liberty while I have a captive audience, somewhat of a captive audience left, to wish our wonderful city clerk a very happy birthday. Thank you. Thank you, Mindy, especially for staying here on a long night. We really appreciate you and all that you do for the city. All right. Now, opening it up to my colleagues. Do we have council comments, ideas, questions? I know that Councilmember Jennings does have a journal memory as well, so noting that. So we can do it either way? Do you think we should do, okay, so let's do council comments? Yep. So, okay. Councilmember Wang.
Thanks. I just have three community events meeting that I wanted to announce. Really excited that this Wednesday, I'm going to be in D5, Vice Mayor in your hood, because you and I are the co-chair for the Food Justice Task Force, and we're going to be meeting in District 5 at the Oak Park Community Center. I don't have the address, but it's at the Oak Park Community Center from 6:00 to 7:30, and dinner will be provided. So if you're interested in that, just hit up either Vice Mayor or I, and we'll make sure that you're on the guest list for that. And then I also just wanted to announce, this is not until next weekend, but I wanted to make sure that I just put a plug for two events that are happening, one in D8 and one in downtown. The first one is the City of Sacramento Earth Day in District 8 on Saturday, April 6, from 9:00 to 12:00. We're going to be beautifying the Sylvia Park. That's at 751124th Street. And so just encouraging folks to sign up for that. If you want to sign up for Earth Day, you can actually, and if you want to sign up for any of the district, you can actually just go to www.cytosacramento.org/earthday, and you can sign up for the multiple events that are happening across our city. And then I just wanted to give a shout out to YIPSY as well. On the same day of Earth Day, YIPSY is also hosting a Youth Resource and Employment Flair, flare, it's probably, it's going to be a flair, too. But Youth Resource and Employment Fair from 9:30 to 12:00 here at City Hall with resources to employers and whatnot. So just wanted to put a plug out there for YIPSY, because I know them and staff and organizing really hard with the young people to put this on, and so I wanted to make sure that I announce that. And that is it. Thanks, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Guerra.
Thank you very much. I wanted to, one, thank our high school intern Emily from the Met, who has organized the District 6 Easter egg hunt and scavenger hunt, where you can go to a local business, and we're going to have hidden Easter egg bunny, and you can bring that there, and there'll be a raffle for those. So we're encouraging people to go out to their local businesses in District 6 and look for this scavenger hunt. You can find information on our webpage, and bring that little card to the Easter egg hunt, and then you're going to get recognized. Our egg, there'll be a lot going on this weekend, but our Easter egg hunt will be at 11:30 a.m. for ages 0 to 3. So for those that are, that got the little ones, 0 to 3, 11:45 for those for 4 to 7, and then at 12 o'clock, 8 to 11. Because I know sometimes being able to hold those kids restless, knowing what time is the hunt that would be good. So 8:30, 11:45, and 12 o'clock. And also, just wanted to, again, you know, this time is a time for family for a lot of us. Schools may or may not be out. And, you know, for those, whether you celebrate Easter or not, it is a time when many of us come together and cherish the, you know, one another or multi-generations. I think this council meeting was fitting for, you know, the end of the Lenten season and Easter season. So for those who celebrate Easter, un feliz pasqua, happy Easter. And for those who don't, enjoy a wonderful spring break and a spring weekend here.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. This weekend is the 22nd Annual
And it's sponsored by the Labor Council for Latin American Advancement for Sacramento as it usually is. So I hope to see folks out there. And then for our Earth Day event, really excited that the city of Sacramento, the locations in District Four will be at Miller Park and the Sacramento Marina, which if you didn't know, they're right next to each other. So two for one. And it'll be again on Saturday, April 6th from 9:00 to noon.
All right. Thank you very much. I've got just a couple of them and I'll announce really quick. So we have the Oak Park Little League Opening Day. That's this Saturday. That's starting at 10 a.m. in the morning and that's going to be at McClatchy Park. Really exciting stuff. And then we have Easter in the Park. That's on the Fourth Avenue Park, 4040 Fourth Avenue in Oak Park as well. And that's City Church's Easter in the Park event. It's really, really fun. It has a bunch of, you know, egg, egg hunts. You have vendors out there. It's a blast. And then at the same exact time, so also in the afternoon, you have the Easter egging it on at the Oak Park Community Center, which is located at 3425 Martin Luther King Boulevard. So if you can come out to one, all please do, super fun. And then I'm going to pass it off to Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We also have a District Seven Easter egg hunt, even though I like the idea of the Easter egg hunt and the scavenger hunt that District Six is doing. And we're going to probably take that idea and bring it over to District Seven because I like that a lot. Yeah, exactly. So, and you might be able to get a little, anyway. So we want you to join us this Saturday, March the 30th, for the District Seven Annual Easter Egg Hunt at Goshabend Park in the Pocket neighborhood. You can arrive at 10 for pictures with the Easter Bunny. And be sure to bring your Easter baskets because you're going to have to collect all of those 6,000 eggs that we have out there that'll be filled with treats. That's right, 6,000 eggs. And we've got a special surprise starting at 10:30 sharp for everybody that's out there. But you got to be on the lookout for the golden egg. So there's going to be four golden eggs out of all those 6,000 eggs. And if you find the golden eggs, there's a special treat for you. So get all the kids, let them know at Goshabend, starting at 10 o'clock, arrive to see the Easter Bunny, 10:30. We'll start the Easter egg hunt and we will go until all the eggs are collected. So that's my announcement for the day.
Thank you very much. And 6,000 eggs, that is very impressive. That is far more eggs than I think.
Exactly.
Incredible, incredible. Okay. Seeing no other comments from my colleagues, Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment on matters not on the agenda?
I do. I have 13 speaker slips, but I think some have left. Charles Fost is here. I'm going to call a few names. Julius, I believe, is left, as is Brian Misano. Allowing Mr. Fost is McWorthy. I then have Sarah, Rachel Wilkinson. And Charles.
Welcome.
I was here with a group of homeless people that are staying at Roseville Road that had to leave because this meeting bumped up, bumped up against their curfew. So Mario Laro was actually able to get some statements from them about the issues they're having and he listened to them. He's actually a really kind guy. He's a real benefit for the city to have. It's been a while because these meetings kept getting shut down. So I have a lot of issues to speak about, but I only have two minutes, so I'm not really going to get to it. I want to start with saying that there, the 2022 point time count, we had 116 transgender adults and 88 adults that identified as gender non-conforming. I think that if that number goes up in 2024, this resolution that you guys passed is kind of for nothing. And then by 2026, if that number isn't zero, then it really is a bullshit resolution. It shows that the city doesn't actually care that much. We should have zero transgender people sleeping on the street at night. During the time where we haven't been able to give public comment, the city had its day in the Ninth Circuit about the lawsuit against the Sacramento Homeless Union about state-created danger. And I think it's worth noting that a lot of the conditions in your guys' shelters are state-created danger. The mold and the mildew and the other conditions, the lack of air conditioning or heating for people is dangerous. And the conditions just outside the shelter, sometimes when people are leaving, that, you know, getting hit by cars or getting hit by trains and stuff, that happens. And you guys probably might not know about it, but I hear about it. I get calls in the middle of the night about people that are in the hospital or needing to go to the hospital. So it's worth knowing that that stuff happens and that the city is putting people in more danger than they were when they were sleeping on the street. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. McWorthy.
I didn't intend to stick around as long without the homosexual thing coming. You didn't do your right research. Now, when we, Ronald Reagan has had to research at University of Davis, you're going to find there could be some mental illness in that. You didn't have a rabbi, you didn't have a preacher here. Be careful. A lot of those people here will die from drugs. There's no scientific to tell you bone or you didn't. But when you look at where I grew up at, it was a punk and a dyke. Well educated, more house, a breed for black homosexual. My first cousin's son, Washington D.C. clerk, Supreme Court, Big Oats. My niece got out of the military right here. Put the ties on her Mustang, get to another city. Got a niece in South Carolina, keep your head low. Independent. My wise brother died from AIDS, homosexual. Nephew, travel the world, out of San Francisco. You're going to see things happen here that's happened in Tennessee. You should have had the preachers on this and the rabbis, but where are they? Where are the Catholic Church that prayed upon young men? Not a word. Well, I talked to a lot of homosexual world, especially the women here. I have them come to me and said, Mac, this is my thing. Take care of yourself, the white women. Be careful. Independence equality is the teaching of the homosexual world because you got people participating that's not homosexual. Drugs will eat them out. You're going to see the police department and I'm going to encourage FBI agents to give us a report on who using drugs in this town. You'll find the biggest drugs used yet is the homosexual community.
Next speaker is Sarah, Rachel, then Jessica.
Hi. I think it's deeply ironic that this week was perm as the Jewish people celebrate their survival over genocidal maniac scheme as cowards and bullies in masks in this very chamber harassed and intimidated and tempted to intimidate Jews and Zionists even tonight with threats and slurs even tonight. But I refuse to hide behind a mask because I'm not a bully, a coward, or a criminal. I left the chambers last week promptly when asked. I wasn't arrested. I don't, I don't know how much clearer it needs to be that anti-Zionism is anti-Semitism. It's a dog whistle. We understand this in other contexts. We understand this in other contexts. BLM and White Lives Matter. We know what White Lives Matter is. It's a dog whistle. They're not talking about how white lives matter or blue lives matter, raw lives matter. It's a dog whistle. The China flu. President Trump wasn't telling Americans where the COVID virus originated. It was a dog whistle. And it was followed by attacks against Asian-Americans all over the country, a spike of them, hundreds of racist memes. It was a dog whistle. Build the wall. That's not people talking about border security or illegal immigration and expressing their political opinion. It's a dog whistle. It's an ethnocentric and racist dog whistle. And we seem to understand it in those contexts. And just because some Jews support the ceasefire or other anti-Zionist actions does not mean you can't hide behind that. Y S said slavery was a choice. Candace Owen wears a White Lives Matter t-shirt. The two most virulent white supremacist border, build the wall border supporters are Enrique Torres, who's now in prison, and Nick Fuentes, white supremists. John Woo wrote a torture memo.
Comments? Your time is complete. Our next speaker, please.
Three days ago, they ordered her to undress and began to beat her. She told the military she was five months pregnant not to beat her, but they continued to beat her. After hours, they took all of the women except for the pregnant woman and her children. They took her in front of her husband and children and gang raped her, ordering the men not to close their eyes or they would shoot. In December, a pre-teen girl was gang raped so violently she had fourth degree perineum tears, which means her vaginal canal tore to her cervix. The soldier threatened her that she told anyone, they would do the same to her little sister who was nine years old. She developed a severe infection and was infested with maggots by the time they were able to make it to medical care. United Nations Human Rights stated in February, "We are particularly distressed by the reports that Palestinian women, girls in detention have also been subjected to multiple forms of sexual assault." Look it up. April 21st, 2020, the alleged gang rape of 16-year-old by some 30 men in the Red Sea Resort of Elliott has sparked outrage in Israel, which Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu called the incident shocking. I'm not surprised. From the Jerusalem Post, August 4th, 2020, "A number of pedophiles in Israel are Jewish immigrants who have sought refuge in the country under the law of return," according to a CBS report published in February. "In Israel, tens of thousands of pedophiles operated on a daily basis without any problem," said Elirin Malqui, head of the Mautzah Association. "They are not deterred by the police and certainly not deterred by the contemptuous rulings that come from the hands of judges in the various courts," meaning it is allowed legally in Israel. In fact, just last May, 2023, there were reports about Israel trying to normalize and legalize pedophilia through the consent, the constant lowering of consent age. California has the highest sex trafficking rates historically. Sacramento is currently number 13. And aren't we also number five in the top world economies? Someone with a better investigation skills might be able to draw some pretty horrible conclusions from some similarities and political ties, especially if it gets out that religious, political Zionist institutions like Capital Christian are working alongside politicians and governments to groom and traffic children internationally. That would be pretty bad if that kind of shit got out, right? Lisa.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Next speaker is Christine Jefferson, then Kelly. Is Christine here?
Hi. Good evening, Council. I'm Christine Jefferson from District Two. And the community is asking you guys, when is Mama Marx Park splash pad going to be started? Right now, our community is sick. We have nowhere to walk or bike or anything. I love the age friendly for elders. Our elders can't walk our bike trails. We, we, we have nothing in D2. I want to know when the splash pad is going to be ready for our littles and we don't want it in the middle of summer. We need that when it starts to get warm. It is now almost going into April. It's going to take some time to put that splash pad together. So someone, please let us know when that splash pad is going to be started, not finished, started. Because like I said, our community is sick. We're sick. We have nothing in D2. And I want my littles to at least be able, we can go to Grand High School and we can swim, they can swim. That pool's too big for them. We have little tiny kids that need to get wet and, and, and enjoy some water. We have elders that might want to walk with their, like someone said, bring their grandbabies and watch them at the, at the water park. We don't have those kind of luxuries in D2. So please, somebody get back to me on when our splash pad is going to start getting built. Thank you.
Mr. Assistant City Manager.
Sure. Ma'am, I don't, I don't have an answer for you, but I'm going to ask if you could give your, sorry, right up here, sorry, apologies. Michael Jasso, Assistant City Manager, if you could give your name and number to Tim Swanson in the back, Tim, if you could do that? And I'll make sure we get a response back to you.
Mr. Jasso, I do have our contact information and I'll make sure the D2 office gets that.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Good evening. This past my bedtime, but I'm going to be very quick. Greetings to Vice Mayor, City Manager, and to all the council members. That's the mayor Steinberg, who is the overseer of District Two until our caretaker comes. We went from a bonded community to now being a handicapped district as Ms. Jefferson has already implemented. But I just want to get a little bit past that because our children, as she said, is interested in and would like to be normalized like the other districts with just normal things like getting wet and splashing around in the pool. But our community is as normal as yours. We don't get to pay half of the taxes. We have to pay all the tax bills that come our way in our community. But I'm just looking for a little bit of empathy from all of the council members right now since we are on suicide watch. Our community has no firehouse leadership, as my Bang had said, that we need it to represent. It's just so un-presidential for us. And we just need the council to have some ears and eyes for us right now because we're going through a serious transition that is affecting us mentally. But on a brighter note, I'd like to say that our community does great things and we would like for you guys to be in support of our community. I rep, I represent District Two as an advocate, but I come from great mentorships, as Christine and Greg Jefferson has me out after hours. But they are showing me about good leadership and to how to stay diligent and how to stay dedicated. And I appreciate them being community organizers. And it's just a little frustrating because them as being great community leaders and a great community association, President Greg Jefferson and a great trustee, is a little bit of frustrating when I have to see them and myself struggle big and bundle to get the things that we need for our community. The Jeffersons put on a great event.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
In our community, that happens, just one second. In Del Paso Heights.
I'm sorry, your time is complete.
We're just looking for you guys' support for our events that are coming up.
Thank you.
Ain't nobody even in here.
And if you want to give me your contact information, I can get that to the D2 office. Do you want to complete your slip?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have a few more. Jessica, Sean, Kathleen, and Sandra. I believe we have no more speakers.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Now to turn it over to Councilmember Jennings for his adjourned memory.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Council, I'd like to adjourn tonight's council meeting in memory of Viola Warren. Viola Warren passed away on March the 8th at the age of 24 years of age. Viola Warren is the mother of two-term council member Alan Wayne Warren and her home-going services were held today. She was 84. In the program that I had hoped to have up, but the Warren and Muton family would like to express our heartfelt gratitude to each and every person who has provided us with unwavering support, prayers, and encouragement during this difficult time. Your kindness and presence have been a source of immense comfort and strength to us and we cannot, and we cannot thank you enough. And this is from Alan Wayne Warren and his sister Lisa Renee Muton. I got a chance to visit with Alan on Monday and we talked about the fact that he's a mama's boy and he misses, he misses his mom. So if you have the opportunity to reach out to him or his wife or his family, I know he would be encouraged by that. So this meeting is adjourned in memory of Viola Warren.
Well said. Great words.